The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, January 28th is now in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. And in conformance with the open meeting law, I'm reminding you that this meeting is being livestreamed. Just a reminder that when you're up here to speak either in support or in opposition to a project, please put your name and address on the record. We are here to fact find, so give us new information. If somebody has already stated your concern or the reason why you are in support, put your name and address on the record. Okay? Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first case is the extension, calling BOA 642-817-101A Morris Street.
At the table, please.
Right up here, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Adala Saravia, and the address is 101A Morris Street. I started this project with an architect.
Can you speak into the mic closer?
Okay. I started this project with an architect. His name was Bradley Chatola, and in the middle of the project, he passed away.
Okay, so you need, how long an extension do you need? A one-year extension?
Madam Chair, it doesn't expire till, expire till April 13th of 2020, but I'll make a motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So you have until next year at this time, okay? So get the project done. Okay? Good luck.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 389-047-982102 White Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Attorney Laurence Cutino, 245 Sumner Street in East Boston, requesting a one-year extension on 98-102 White Street. This case was actually subject to litigation, so that's why it is such an old case. However, the case was not finalized until February 16th of 2018, so we're expect, we're requesting a one-year extension from February 16th of this year to next year. We anticipate construction to begin sometime in the summer. We're just finalizing the last couple of approvals, one of which is Parks Department.
Yes. Madam Chair, that just does not expire till February 16th of 2020. I'll make a motion for a one-year extension.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling an extension, calling BOA 725-224-37241 Boden Street. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way, seek a two-year extension. This board granted a conditional use permit to Verizon to install antenna on the rooftops at 34 through 30, 37 through 41 Boden Street. On August 16th, the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission issued a denial of the application for a certificate of appropriateness. And on September 12th, Verizon filed a complaint in the federal district court under the Telecommunication Act. That is ongoing in discovery. The filing of that complaint does not toll the running of the zoning relief, and we seek a two-year extension.
Madam Chair, it doesn't expire till April 13th of 2020, but I'll make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think on all of these, we should probably make it active from the date of expiration, the real expiration date, in this case, April 13th, and likewise for the previous cases.
Calling the next case for board final arbiter, calling the next two cases, calling BOA 986-767-63 Violet Street. There is a companion case, BOA 986-769-65 Violet Street. Name and address for the record, please.
That's Guy Pratt, architect for the project 454 Lowell Avenue, Newton, Mass.
Eric Burke, developer, 77 Pond Ave, Brookline.
So were these one of the DND parcels?
Yes.
And so why are you here?
Well, here because originally, the board on November 19 approved a subdivision plan, which revised the property lines between the two separate properties, 9063 and 65. However, that plan indicated Lot C. Lot C is actually the area that's, that includes the actual common driveway. So it's one driveway between the two properties.
Was that in the rear of the lot?
Uh, the rear? I'm sorry? The right side of the lot, one driveway.
Tyrone, did you look at that drawing?
Uh, I did not.
Tyrone, did you?
I did not.
You did not? Okay.
Oh, yeah. That driveway is on the right side of the lot. That driveway was established based on a community participation, and the neighborhoods wanted one driveway in, instead of two driveways. However, that driveway, Lot C, is a square footage that is, that's neither included in 63 Violet Street or 65 Violet Street. The title lawyer suggested that that driveway has to be divided. Some of the driveway should be, square footage should be assigned to 63, and some of that driveway should be assigned to 65. So that's the reason for the violation. The new subdivision plan actually takes that driveway and gives portion of that driveway to 63 and portion of the driveway to 65.
Do we have a plan that...
I have something here, Madam Chair.
That are...
You can have somebody take a look at down there.
I have an extra copy.
We want to have a record.
We're the same.
So is that...
It's the same thing we have.
So these are attached townhouses, they look like, and the parking is, as you look at the house on the right-hand side in the rear?
Yes.
And you're proposing to subdivide it into 63 being essentially an L-shaped lot?
Yes.
Okay, with an easement to 63 from 65.
Yes, that's the only way we could accomplish one driveway and be able to access, create parking spaces for both 63 and 65. Again, that lot is, again, not assigned, the square footage is not assigned to either one of those properties. So what the subdivision, as suggested by the title lawyer, what it does, it assigns portion of that lot, square footage to 63 and a portion to 65. With thus, what it also does, it actually makes 63 lot size increases and 65 lot square footage increases as well.
So may I ask a question of the developer? Does this have ramifications for other projects that you've brought before us, then?
No, not, I mean, not, no, it doesn't. It's connected to, it's within a package that we have from DND, but it's not...
It's just this particular...
Yes, just this one.
Set of, okay.
Yes.
May I have a motion, please? Sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask a few questions? I don't understand how both, you said both lot sizes increase. One would increase, the other would decrease.
Yeah, increase because that driveway, square footage, right, previously does not belong to either one.
Oh, I see.
So once we assign portion of that driveway in each one, then each, each lot actually is going to put increases.
And is there an easement for the use of both lots?
Yes, there's always an original easement for that driveway. That easement will remind, remain, which give both properties access to their parking spaces, and we will also be filed and with the registry of deeds to, to make sure that works legally at the appropriate time.
Okay, so I know you already said this, but previously to what you're proposing today, Lot 65 would have gone all the way to the back of the, of what is now currently 63, and the driveway would have been with the abutting adjacent property?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Previously to this plot plan?
Yes.
To what you're proposing now?
Yes.
The lot, number 65, that lot would have gone all the way back to the end of the property line?
No, would not. Essentially, that property, the rear property line of 65, I'm sorry, 63, yes, yes. That stays as it is. The original property line for 65, shown on that plan, is actually, rear property line is the original property line.
Okay. So it's L-shaped before?
Yes, absolutely, yes. The only difference is that that driveway...
Okay, got it.
Is, is being divided, at least square footage assigned to both, both, both properties.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, I lost my paperwork, yeah. Thank you. Calling the next case of board final arbiter, the next two cases, calling BOA 919-606-187 Sumner Street. The companion case, BOA 919-605-191-201 Sumner Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano, an address of 15 Broad Street. With me, I have Diane Dooley, the architect for the project, and Adam Goldstein from the CDC. Before you, we have a subdivision plan, and what we're seeking to do for both of these cases is to adjust our lot sizes slightly. One lot would go up slightly in size, and the other would go down.
Counselor, this was before this board, when?
March 12th, 2019.
March 12th? And what was the goal?
For the project itself?
Yep.
So this was an affordable housing project. There's an existing building called Woodbury that's on one of the parcels now. We subdivided that parcel, and we created, proposed 42 affordable senior housing units.
Okay, okay.
And so as we got into our construction drawings, we noticed that we needed more windows for the newly created building. And so by doing that, we had fire separation distance that we had to accommodate 780 CMR. And then we also had to put a transformer in, an electrical transformer, that required some setback distance from the buildings. If you look at the...
So this is to avoid any building code violations?
Correct.
Okay, and this does not create, and you're clear that this is not creating any additional violations for any of the properties?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, drawing's ready.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to call the 930 cases. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 930?
Yes.
Come up to the, address, please?
This is John Barry from Foreman Granted Ave.
Address, please?
The app, the application is 23 Arcadia Street, BOA 993496.
Hold on a second. For the record, calling BOA 993496, 23 Arcadia Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Barry, Foreman Granted Ave, Milton, Mass, 021-86. Madam Chair, members of the board, we respectfully requesting a deferral at this time to spend more time with the community and make potential edits to the plans that have been filed.
How long has this been in process?
The application was filed in June. The community process started in August or September. We went before the Fields Corner Civic Association, both in November and in December, and there were conversations had this week with members from ONS as far as some work that should be done in the community to continue working with the community, and that is why we are requesting a deferral at this point.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Can I ask a question first? I realize you're looking for a deferral and not quite the substance, but there's issue. Are the issues involved with unit size?
The issues involved are more maybe the unit count.
So in fact, related to size?
Yes.
Potentially, yes.
Okay, so that's a problem.
Because they are, they are substandard sizes?
They certainly are.
Okay, so just put that, take that into consideration as we work the plans.
Certainly.
Okay, may, is there a motion?
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We have a date of March 24th.
Thank you.
March 24th, 11:30. And just a reminder to everybody who's coming up here for requests for deferrals, that we are not prone to give an unending number of deferrals. So just make sure that you're being realistic in your request. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Address, counsel?
707 Walk Hill Street.
For the record, calling BOA 768, I'm sorry, 968-679-707-WALKHILLSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Jeff Drago, with an address of 15 Broad Street. We are here today seeking a deferral. We had a number of butter meetings on this project, a civic association meeting. We just last week, we're finally, a call was made back to us from one of the civic associations, two neighborhood services, asking that we appear before them at the next meeting. So we agreed through ONS to defer, or ask for a deferral if we could, to continue to work with the civic associations.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
You'll also have a date of March 24th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Address, please?
There are three addresses that are linked, 387 to 397 Dudley.
Okay. For the record, calling BOA 102-6277, 387 to 397 Dudley Street.
383 to 385 Dudley?
I have them, ma'am.
Great.
I'm going to follow them in. Case BOA 102-6276, 383 to 385 Dudley Street, and BOA 102-6279, 375 to 385 Dudley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Rebecca Mountner from Nuestre Comunidad, the owner at 56 Warren Street in Roxbury.
So tell us why you're requesting a deferral?
We, as we were preparing for this hearing and comparing the zoning code refusal letter with our plans that we submitted with ISD, we realized that a few variances that we needed were not included on the refusal letter. We went back to ISD. They issued a new refusal letter last Friday to us, but we understand from Stephanie Haynes that this needs to be deferred to March 10th. We've had extensive meetings with the commi...
Because it essentially needs to be read advertised.
Correct.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And they do have a date of 310, at 11:30.
At 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930? Hearing none, call the first case. Calling BOA 978-302-56-HILLICKSTREET. This is demolish an existing two-story, single-family residence, construction of a new two-and-a-half-story, two-family residence. The violation is Article 67, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 67, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. And Article 67, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm located at 1990 Center Street in West Roxbury. To my right, I'm joined by Roberto De Oliveira and Ryan Pinkham. Mr. De Oliveira is the owner of the property, but also part of the design team along with Mr. Pinkham. And what we're seeking to do is demolish an existing, single-family home that's been vacant for some time. The home was built in 1892 and is in significant disrepair. We submit, and we seek to replace it with a two-family structure that would be sold as condos, and we'd suggest that the use is certainly appropriate, as this is a two-family zone, and the design is similarly appropriate. As far as community process goes, we did hold in a butter...
Please, please, we have people who will talk about community process. You have expertise in zoning, so please tell us about the violations.
Certainly.
And tell us, describe to us what the, what the project is, the sizes and the need for variances.
I could defer to Mr. Pinkham to describe what they, what they're proposing to actually build, and then I can go into the variances, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So we're proposing a new two-family structure, approximately 3,700 square feet. Within the, where three variances are requested, it is a, it is a corner lot, which is a consideration. FAR is a consideration as well, though we found that we, the, within the building envelope, we are in appropriate scale to the, to the neighborhood.
The, sorry, I'm sorry, just, sorry, Mr. Pinkham. The, the structure would include underground garage for vehicles, so we have two, four off-street parking spaces, two per unit, first-floor living space, second-floor living space, and then we do have an attic with a proposed bedroom with some living space in that attic as well. The specifics of the zoning code violations is first would be lot size, and for a two-family would be minimum of 8,000 square feet. We have 5,500 square feet, though a mitigating factor may be that, and on page four of the packet, I sort of highlighted the neighborhood, and the average lot size in this neighborhood, as highlighted, is 5,194, so we do exceed that by over 300 feet. And in fact, in this area, in that neighborhood, there are no two families that are on a conforming lot. Open space violation, minimum required for this two-family would be 3,500 square feet. We're providing 3,200 square feet, and to mitigate that, by way of comparison, on an 8,000-square-foot lot, open space would be 3,500 square feet, which would provide only 43% open space coverage. With 3,200 square feet, which we're providing, on our lot, which is 5,500 square feet, we're providing 55% open space coverage on that lot, which I suggest is appropriate for that area. Third is the FAR violation. Minimum is .5. We're at .67, and I'd suggest, as far as FAR goes, in measuring densing and massity, mitigating factors are that we're not seeking any height variance, or we're within the height restrictions, and we're on the rear of butter and the side of butter, we're within setback restrictions, and the setback violation, which I'll get to next, is along the street as the corner lot. So we're not, the, the structure won't be imposing in any way on its abutting neighbors, and it won't be imposing by way of height. And that brings me to the fourth violation, which is a side yard setback. That setback is along the corner street, so we are subject to the corner lot provision, which states that that side yard setback has to be measured by the front yard setback as a corner lot. So we're at 10 feet along that side, and that would meet the side yard setback, but because the code is going to measure it from the front yard setback as a corner lot, that front yard is 20 feet, so we're not, we're, we're, we need the variance for that side yard setback. But again, I just point out that it's the corner lot provision. And while we certainly believe this to be an appropriate use, I'd ask you, don't, don't take it from me, but the immediate abutter, Ms. Donovan, who's provided a letter of support, stated that I think the new...
On which side?
She is, if you're looking, Madam Chair, at the building from the street, she is right to the left.
On the long side of the...
If I'm looking at the building on, after Hillef makes the turn, she's on the left-hand side?
Not after it makes the turn. If you're, even from the front page here, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
If you're standing right here, before it goes up.
Yeah.
She's on the left.
And then you look to the left.
That's, so that's a rental property. It's three, it's three families? Is it three units or is it two units? I can't remember.
It's two units. I believe it's two units, and Mrs. Donovan lives in that house as well.
Yeah, okay.
She lives there, and, and we, we've engaged with her and had a site walk with her and the structural engineer, because there's a shared retaining wall, and Ms. Donovan states that she thinks the new look would transform the neighborhood, and it's better than the existing eyesore.
But did you apply, since the building is old, for demo delay? Did you do anything about that?
We have submitted an application, but that process, we don't have that process completed yet, but we...
And have you seen the BRA's recommendation?
I have. I communicated with the BPDA, and I do understand their position in this matter. Madam Chair.
Okay. Because I know, I happen to know the property, I happen to walk down that street fairly frequently, so I know that hill, I know that turn, and I know how it can be a blind corner sometimes, and I also know the, the change in grade.
Yes.
So I just put that on the record. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, drawing's ready.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Carpenter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this project. They completed their community process on August 6th, 2019. Originally, there were some concerns about parking, but they, they're not seeking relief on a variance for parking. They do have four, four spaces per code. At this time, we have no further questions or concerns, and we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody else to speak in support? Please, please hustle along.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Hank Cohen, speaking in the office of Ricardo Arroyo's office. We'd like to echo the support of the Office of Neighborhood Services for this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor Savi Georgia's office, like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, could we hear the BPDA recommendation?
I believe you have it right in front of you. It's just that our planners and architects think that this could use some work.
And as, as...
From what perspective?
All perspectives. Design, density.
Yes, and I am having, I'm not in a butter, but I walked the street, as I mentioned before, and it is, it is somewhat out of character of the, of the neighborhood. May I have a motion, please?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve, but with a very strong BPDA design review to, to deal with the issues they're raising.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, for the record, I'm opposed as the project, I think, is too dense for this part of the neighborhood. Okay, good luck.
Motion passes. I, I didn't hear, oh.
Ugly.
Thank you.
Sounds for me.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 102-968-229-RockhillRoad. There is a companion case, BOA 102-968-012-RockhillRoad. This is for 29 Rockhill Road. This is direct, in addition, provide two ancillary parking to 12 Rockhill Road. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. This is for 12 Rockhill Road. This is to combine three existing lots into one, 10,138-square-foot lot land at 29 Rockhill Road, and Lot B, 31 Rockhill, and Lot C, to be known as 12 Rockhill Road. Direct a new four-story, 15-unit residential building. Propose two ancillary parking for 29 Rockhill Road. This is, the violation is Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking, design maneuverability, tandem parking. Article 55, Section 8, a multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 55, Section 8, ancillary parking is conditional. Article 55, Section 9, lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 55, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. I'm the business director of 51 Dobbs Group in Milton, Mass. With me today is the owner of the property, Mr. Matthew Hayes, and the architect, Mr. Ed Forte. Just one correction, Madam Chair, on that notification. This is for 14 residential units.
I'm sorry, it's all...
It's for 14 residential units, not 15.
Not, not, sorry.
I think the original advertisement said 15.
Okay, so 14 residential units?
That's correct.
But it's still four stories and all the violations are the same?
That's correct, yep. And we'll go through those. So we're here today seeking relief to combine the lots.
Was this project before this board in the past? Was this project before this board in the past?
No.
No? Okay.
Seeking relief to combine the lots and erect a building for 14 residential units with 26 parking spaces. Madam Chair, the current existing site consists of three dilapidated garages and one storage building, which, which need to be torn down. The zoning sub-district is 3F, 5,000. And as the secretary said, the lot size is 10,138 square feet. The violations are as follows.
So on 10,138 feet, how many unit, units could you build?
Six, six as in allowed use.
Six allowed, okay, and you're proposing 14?
14, that's correct. So with off-street parking, the requirement is 21. We have 26. We have eight tandem spots on-site. We have two tandem spots off-site. And the reason why 29 Rock Hill Road is being brought in is because we are proposing to do ancillary parking at that site.
So, and how many parking spaces at, at 29?
I believe there's four. Is that correct? Six, excuse me, six. With regard to the multifamily use as a violation, it's a forbidden use in this district. The ancillary parking is a conditional use. The FAR requirement is .6. We are proposing 1.8. The building height requirement is 35 feet or three stories. We are proposing 36 feet at four stories. Lot frontage, we think that we erroneously cited on that, as the requirement is 45 feet, and we have 92 feet. If you look at PD 1.1, that will show the lot, the lot size and the dimensions of the front yard. Usable open space, Madam Chair, the requirement is 1,250 square feet per lot. We are, have, we are proposing 2,054 square feet. And part of the reason we're below this is because, due to community process, we took away some open space with removing the roof decks and removing the balconies that were on the original proposal. With regard to the side yard, the side yard requirement is 10 feet. On the east side of the property, we're proposing approximately 6 feet. On the south side, 7 feet 8 inches. And on the west side, 5, 4. The rear yard requirement is 20 feet. We're proposing 16 and 17 feet, as it varies, as the back of the property is slanted just a little bit. The building setback is further from the property line than the existing structures that exist on, on the property. I'll pause here, Madam Chair, and let Mr., the architect, Ed Forte, go through the site plan and the dimensions of the, of the units, just for you guys' clarification. Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Ed Forte. I'm the architect for the project.
Can you speak up, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Ed Forte. I'm the architect for the project. The unit mix, we're proposing, again, we're proposing 14 units. There'll be four two-bedrooms units on the second floor, and two one-bedroom units on the second floor, five two-bedrooms on the third floor, and three two-bedroom units on the fourth floor. Two of these units are designated as affordable units. Matt has been, has met with the BPDA, and they've identified those two units. There will be two, two-bedroom units will be, will be, are designated as affordable units.
No three-bedrooms proposed, no family units proposed?
No three-bedrooms are being proposed.
Okay. And this, and the average size of the twos and the, and the ones?
The one-bedroom units are at 710 square feet. That's interior gross area. And the other two bedrooms are all at approximately 1,000 square feet. There are three two-bedrooms that are larger than that, that are about 1,200 to 1,300 square feet.
And have you seen the BPDA's recommendation?
Yes, we have, Madam Chair. And as I spoke to Mr. Hampton, that was based on the 15 units and it having to go through Article 8. So I'll let the justice-
Yeah, I, the reduction of one unit really wouldn't change our recommendation, but the plans that we reviewed would require to go through Article 80. And since there was no communication with the planning and zoning department, our recommendation stands.
Technical review, based on the zoning and on the square footage.
On the plans that we had, yes.
Yes, thank you.
We've met with Michael Canizo on that.
For Michael Canizo's design, and this is technical review. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawing's all right.
Are all right?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I think this is the first time we've heard an "all right."
I'm trying to expand the-
The vocab, okay.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Hold on, hold on. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant worked closely with community and abutters to address concerns. They received support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justice McClair from City Council, Madam Malley's office. We would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Savi Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Andres with the Carpenter's Inn. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
My name is David Imming. I live at 38 Paul Gore. We also own 21 Rock Hill. That's the entire other end of the street. I think the project speaks for itself. I've been looking at these derelict buildings for 40 years. I'd love to see this go up, and I think it would be a shame if it weren't built. Fully in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please come, put your name and address on the record, and tell us what your opposition is based on.
My name is-
Please speak at the mic, just like everybody else has lined up, please, and put your name and address on the record.
Sign somewhere, or no?
No. Please line up and put your name and address on the record, and tell us what your opposition is based on.
Okay, I'm Sharon Kerinsky. I live at 31 Paul Gore Street, which is very, I'm in a butter. I'm here on behalf of abutters at number 19, number 27, 28, 31, 35, and 37, Paul Gore Street, as well as approximately 100, 100 people who are residents of Paul Gore Street, who signed a petition opposing this project. As someone who lives approximately 100 feet from the auto body shop on Rock Hill Road, which is 10 feet or so from the proposed project, and has been here since 1984, and hears the noises emanating from the auto body shop on a regular basis, I find it totally inappropriate to put a 14-unit housing project right next to the auto body shop. Aside from the noises, chemicals, and fumes generated by the auto body shop, there is, on weekdays, a congestion of cars waiting for servicing on this small U-shaped private way, which it seems to me would make it most difficult to add the 28 cars going in and out of this project, not to mention that some of the proposed parking spots are directly blocking others, making them virtually useless. Also, aside from the fact that this project is completely out of character for the neighborhood of mostly two- and three-family houses, Paul Gore Street, which Rock Hill Road feeds off of, as well as into, is already a very busy pass-through street, and parking has been getting more and more difficult over the years. And many of us older residents have no off-street parking, and find it difficult to carry our groceries a block or two from our cars to our houses when there are no spots nearby, and to park three blocks away on Marine Street if we happen to take our cars out the day before a street cleaning. Even if parking was provided for all residents, there would still be 14 units worth of people whose visitors would be parking on Paul Gore Street if they could find a spot, making parking even more difficult for residents. Furthermore, as very large vehicles, such as fire trucks, cannot make the turn off Paul Gore Street onto Rock Hill Road, and you can check with our local fire station to verify that, I imagine that during construction of this project, there would be many large vehicles competing for the limited parking on Paul Gore Street. I believe that contrary to what seems to be policy, the wishes of residents who have lived here and been taxpayers to the city of Boston for years and decades should be considered more important than providing more housing to outsiders who are trying to move to the city. Also, the so-called two-units of affordable housing provided by this project is a joke. $2,200 plus a month for a small two-bedroom with no porch yard is not affordable housing, and should not be considered more important than the quality of life of the decades-long residents.
Thank you. So now, thank you, ma'am. So, so far, I've heard quality of life, I've heard public safety, I've heard congestion, I've heard context, and proximity to the auto body shop. If you have, please put your name and address on the record, and if you have new information, give it to me. Otherwise, put your name and address on the record, and please have a seat so we can hear some more from the rest of the abutters. Okay?
My name is Peggy Zaldivar. I live at 37 Paul Gore Street, Unit 2. Rock Hill Road exits directly opposite my house.
Excuse me, ma'am. Did you hear what I just said? Please give me new information. I've heard about quality of life, I've heard public safety, I've heard congestion, I've heard context of the neighborhood, and proximity to auto body shop. I have your name and address on the record? Please give me new information. If not, it's okay. You can have a seat, it's fine. Because this first speaker gave us a lot to consider.
Well, I guess I was reiterating-
Thank you.
-many of the things that I have observed regarding the, the safety of-
Thank you.
Of this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Kathy Holland. I live on Paul Gore Street and have for many years. I'm at number 79. And I represent those of us who live a little further down but are still going to be adversely affected by this project. One of the people from the Boston Climate Action Network was going to try to come to express my concern and her concern about the, the number of gas hookups that will be required for this rather, this too-large project, and, and the proximity to an auto body shop with all of those vehicles, all of the, you know, I mean, the vehicles nowadays are internal combustion. This is a great risk for fire. And furthermore, I don't have my own handicap parking spot. It's very difficult to get. And the congestion, and the traffic, and the parking difficulties makes it so I can't even go out for groceries sometimes if I don't leave soon enough. And, you know, I've already lost 11 pounds doing without meals because I can't, you know, I just can't safely get in and out. I want to continue living there, and I'm speaking, I have to speak in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, ma'am, your name and address, and give us new information.
Pat Feely at 69 Paul Gore Street. I've lived in Jamaica Plain for over 50 years. And my only new piece would be, I didn't hear, and I know that may not be related directly to the multiple zoning violations we're talking about, but affordability and fitting into the neighborhood in the affordable issue is, we, you all have, I believe, a copy of the 100 signatures against this project. Do you, have you all seen that?
Thank you.
Yes, okay. And what people have talked about, there are many elderly on that street, as well as young people, and there's a lot of concern about when retirement happens, reduced income, and not being able to afford this kind of rent. And I don't know if rent comes up here, but affordability and lack of affordability in this project, including even the two, quote, "affordable" units-
Thank you.
-is a big concern.
Thank you. Counselor, so you've heard about context-
Mm-hmm.
-congestion, quality of life, and the number of parking violations.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. For identification, can, if I can get your attention to PD 1.3.
And this is on 12 or 20 and 12, right?
On 12, this is correct. Rock Hill Road is a U-shaped street, private way, by the way, off of Paul Gore Street. My client, Matt Hayes, owns JP Auto Body and the property next door. So if you look at the photos that are there, the only cars that park on that street currently are cars for his business. Matt, do you want to chime in?
Yes, Matthew Hayes, I'm the owner of the properties at 29, 12, and 27 Rock Hill Road. Rock Hill Road is a private way, and, yes, we've had fire trucks on Rock Hill Road, it's not an issue. The body shop next door to this project is a full sprinkled building. There has never been any issue with that. The new proposal of this new building would be also a full sprinkled building in the new construction. As far as affordability, we have proposed two affordable units, and-
So, so thank you.
Yeah.
And I went, go ahead.
Hey, Matt, you also, just to reiterate, we do have the support of the JP Neighborhood Council. We also have a support letter from all of our abutters up on Cranston Street-
Director of-
And a couple of other support letters from director abutters of the project.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please? We need to make the plain residence on this board. Anybody on this board want to chime in?
I'm going to make a motion to deny it based on density.
Is there a second?
Based on what?
Density. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We, with the denial, we can come in. With another proposal within a year. But not the same proposal.
That's correct. Can we make that denial without prejudice?
No, the vote has voted this second, it's, the vote's been taken. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-5330, 16 to 18 on Ada Street. This is a change of oxygen from a two-family to a three-family, and remodeling existing two-car garage into a studio apartment. Ada Street here? This is a violation, Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 67, Section 8, a three-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article 67, Section 8.2, dwelling units in a basement are forbidden. Article 67, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 67, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
James Rissleen, 64 Alston Street, Cambridge, Massachusetts.
Mark Regoven, 1618 Ada Street.
So tell us what you're proposing to do.
We're here to seek relief and approval to construct a third unit, a small studio within an existing structure.
How lo, how small is small?
It is 368 square feet.
Okay. And this is an, an existing garage, from what I can gather from the advertisement?
That's correct.
And so then what are you doing at the garage space that's supposed to be providing the parking?
The existing garage is entered from the side of the building, and given the narrowness of the lot, and the sloping of the lot, the lot slopes precipitously to the rear, use of that garage would be difficult.
Does this, does this project really have any merit with a 368-square-foot unit proposed?
It gives my, my client, owner, Mark Regoven, an opportunity to move back into this building.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawing's ready.
Yep. And where is parking being proposed for this, for this project?
1618 Ada Street is on a private street, so we would continue to park on the street.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Carpenter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We completed the community process on December 11, 2019. At that meeting, there, it was met with no concerns, so at this point, we have no further questions or concerns, and would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record. I'm going to ask everybody here who's here to speak. We have an agenda. Please don't dilly-dally. Please line up and be ready, okay?
Susan Vanini, 26 Brown Ave. We were not around, we were out of town for that December 11th meeting, so we weren't there to voice our opposition. Our grounds for opposition are every single variance request here, the density, the off-street parking, the fact that there is going to, there's another project on 49 to 51 Brown Ave, which impacts, there's going to be a brand-new, nonexistent, now to be existent-
So, yeah, so please talk-
-two-family on Ada Street, directly in front of that.
So we just want to know about this particular property, and your concern is for the violations that have been cited?
Every, every violation here. The density, the congestion, the note lack of parking, and the fact that there's another project directly in front of it that will be impacting congestion as well.
Thank you.
Hank Cohen, Office of Ricardo Arroyo. We would just like to echo the comments of Susan right there, in opposition of this project.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
I am.
You're opposed? Thank you. I'm opposed too because these are very small units. The motion is to deny. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-7042, 2254 to 2260 Dorchester Avenue. Dorchester Avenue here? Okay. This is to expand an existing restaurant to an abutting commercial space. No change in the building footprint. The violation's Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is James Christopher of RCA LLC with Project Architects with a business address of 415 DePont's Ave. Joined to my right by Brendan and Pat Newell. They're the owners of Pat's Pizza on Dorchester Avenue. The proposal is to expand the restaurant to the existing budding, a budding commercial space. The only violation is an extension of a non-conforming use. The, the net increase would be used to increase the kitchen size, it's about 375 square feet, and to increase the seating count from 19 to 34. The project was presented at Lower Mill Civic Association. I have for the board's attention a letter of support from the Civic Association.
There we have it.
And that's all indoor seating?
All indoor.
19 to 34? And this is, and does this, this is just for restaurant use? It's not for takeout?
It is a takeout restaurant. The license exists, it's just the extension of the non-conforming use.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing's okay.
Any questions from the board?
Are you asking for a new takeout provision to this owner, not?
No, it's, it's the same restaurant, just the footprint gets bigger. So there's no change to the, the current operation.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Vandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in full support of this proposal. As the applicant said, they met with the Lower Mill Civic, receiving their full support. We'd just like to go on record in this historic institution in a vibrant commercial district.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Joe McEckern, City Counselor, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in strong support. These gentlemen have run a fantastic business in our community for years and been very generous to the community, and we look forward to them serving us for a very long time.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Counselor Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Counselor Savi George's office. Would like to go in strong support of this project for a much-loved establishment in Dorchester. Thank you very much.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 102-0221, 39 Mellon Street. This is a change of occupancy to include accessory family daycare, home-serving, five children, children, no work to be done. The violation's Article 65, Section 8, accessory family daycare, home use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jessica Kristicovich and I'm at 39 Mellon Street, number two.
So tell us what you're proposing to do.
So I'm proposing a narrowly limited change of use to include a family daycare program with up to five children outside my home.
And so is this, is this care going to be proposed, so this is a, is this a two-family dwelling?
It is a two-family dwelling.
It's a two-twelve family, so is it in the second-floor unit?
It's on the second and third floors is my unit.
Okay. And you need to be licensed by the state?
I have gone through the rigorous licensing process through the state. It's been a year and a half of training, a very long examination of all my paperwork, my curriculum, and the, the home itself.
Okay. And tell us about the street. Is there, how is drop-off, pickup supposed to work?
So, it is, it is a street that, up at the top of the street, does have some congestion issues when there's people parked on both sides. We're at the bottom of the street where that's less of an issue. We also have, the arrangement of our driveway is such that we can have, that we have a sort of get-around parking spot, a spot that's generally left empty so that the person who's parked in the back of it can get around the one that's at the bottom of the, of the driveway, which would be an easy place to, for children, for parents dropping off children, to park temporarily to, to bring the child in. I also have, it's going to be about a two-hour period of time during which up to five children will be arriving or leaving.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing's okay.
Any questions from the board?
No, this is, this would be this applicant only?
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Vandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was a community process around this proposal, including an onsite Butters meeting, and the applicant met with the Ashmont Hills Civic Association, receiving their full support. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. We would just ask that the applicant continue maintaining conversations regarding operations with the other unit in the building. In reference to the transportation, I just would like to note that BTD and my office are working on some plans in the spring on this area, including parking, congestion, pedestrian safety. So we'd just like to note that as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dustin Gardner. On behalf of City Counselor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support, echoing the comments of the Mayor's office.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Yes, my name is Eileen Mellow. I am a co-owner with my daughter Kathleen, who lives in Unit 1, 39 Mellon Street. We have several reservations and concerns with this change, number one being that my daughter was not invited to the Butters meeting and had no opportunity.
Tell us about the technical information. What, what is your opposition based on?
The opposition is based on the fact that this home has, that these, that the applicant has four Butters in the house and is introducing five more families into the home. It's a one, one-car parking space, it's, there is no parking in, in there. And we're concerned with our legal liabilities, this is a condominium, a condominium association. We're concerned with the fact that there has been a significant rodent infestation. In one month, 20 mice were caught. There's trash concerns, there's rodent infestations, and just the general, just the general public safety.
Is this attributed, the rodents and the trash, is this attributed to Unit 2 or is it a general neighborhood?
There's a lot of people, there's seven people, there's a lot of people in, in it's introducing a daycare and those concerns have not been addressed. On top of that, so, and our, the legal liability, we have asked to be indemnified and that has also not, not happened. But I challenge the legal, I have, no, I have another concern that's probably the most pressing one, is that since we purchased this, this property in 2017, they have transferred their, their legal residence to Rhode Island. They also have a home there. Their daughter goes to school there. They insure their car in Rhode Island, Providence, Rhode Island. So in order to be an accessory family daycare, it is presumed that you are a permanent primary resident of Boston. That's the basis of the licensing as well, but that's outside of this remit. So I have real concerns about the legal nature. This is not accessory family daycare, this is a commercial business. And that's not what the zoning request was for.
Thank you. Ma'am, your name and address for the record?
My name is Brenda Davis and I live at 53 Ocean Street, the owner of the property. I am opposed to this for some of the very same reasons the other unit owner stated. The street is a one-way street, heavily congested, thickly settled, and in the mornings when people are going to work and dropping off their children, it's going to be a nightmare on that street. Also, because we're close to the T, the potential for people dropping off their five children, they're likely to park on the street or seek parking in the community, and we already have parking issues and concerns. This is just going to add to the nightmare.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I guess we get to the core issue. Do you live in the house or is it a rental?
I do live in the home. I'm currently spending a significant period of time fixing a historic property in Providence. What makes it viable for me to move back into my home full-time in Boston would be to be able to open the, the childcare program.
And, and are there, how many, how many bedrooms in this unit, Mr. Olick?
Five to six.
There's five to six bedrooms in this unit?
Yes. Two on the second floor and four on the third floor. We currently do rent out to tenants the four on the third floor. They've all been vetted, triple, triple background checked by the state and, as, which is a part of the, the process. And my intent would be not, would be to phase them out as I grow my own family.
How many units in this condo?
Two.
Complex?
So, so if I get this straight, there's a unit on the first floor. In the second unit, there's five to six bedrooms, and you've rented out the third, basically the third floor, to tenants? And there's four tenants, did you say?
There are four in four bedrooms, two of whom are pediatric nurses. They're good friends of mine.
Hold on, no comments, please. I just need to hear from you because you are, you know, we're trusting your information. Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Can I just follow up with some questions?
Yes.
I, I'm having trouble understanding the layout and the use of the space. You've got two floors.
Yes.
You've got tenants on this, on yours, your second.
On my second floor, the third floor, yes.
Four tenants?
Yes, in four bedrooms.
And all of the daycare would happen on the first floor?
On the first floor, the, all of the daycare would happen on the, on the first floor.
Are there separate means of egress and from the?
There are. There are, there are two routes of egress from the third floor and from the second floor.
So that the tenants from the third floor would not go through the daycare center to get in?
They don't have to go through the daycare center to get.
So is it a separate unit then?
It is not a second unit. They share, they share a kitchen and there are two full bathrooms, one of which would be used for the program.
And you know that there is a regulation that no more than four unrelated individuals can live in a house and, or in a unit, and it sounds like you're already in violation of that before introducing another use of daycare into this facility, into this building. Anyway, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion denied.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Your, your proposal has been denied.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-7325, 1526 to 1530 Dorchester Avenue. This is a change of occupancy to include performance arts center, a new tenant fit-out space located on the second floor. Work to include sprinkler alteration, alarm, demolition, or sailing. The violation's Article 65, Section 8, performing arts center use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Ricardo Veronik, Art Associate at LDA Architecture and Interiors, and we are hoping to occupy a vacant unit in the building on the corner of Dorchester Ave and Park Street. It, the, the project location...
Can you please speak up?
Could you speak into the?
Speak up, please.
Oh, pardon me. Thanks.
Who's the tenant? Who's the proposed tenant?
And next to me is Lucy and Lorraine, they're the tenants and the contractor.
What's the, what's the name of the business?
The interdisciplinary performing arts center.
Okay. Okay.
A quick history of the, of the property. It was an old movie theater that was decked over in the 90s to allow for expanded retail space on the first floor, which left the second floor vacant for the past 25 years, and we're hoping to occupy that space. The use of the block of buildings, which is 1524 to 1530 Dorchester Ave, also 132 to 134 Park Street, they're all connected, is retail offices, SROs on the second floor, and also storage use. And so we're hoping to occupy the vacant space with a business use.
So please give us details. Okay, so if this is a performing arts center and it's a forbidden use in this district, tell us how many proposed seats, what kind of hours of operation, when is, you know, performance times? Give us all the details that will help us make a decision.
Sure.
And, and if, if anybody else will be speaking at the table, please put your name and address on the record.
So it's, it's a, the space is going to be a practice space. Artists can rent out desks. It can be after-school programs. I don't know the schedule of events, but the hours of operation were going to be 7:00 AM to 9:00. And the owner of the block of buildings owns its own parking lot. So that is an added feature.
Do you have somebody who's going to be operating the space? Put your name and address on the record and give us more details. Do you have a track record operating a space like this elsewhere?
We do not have a track record, a track record of operating the space. My name is Lorraine Chapman.
Okay.
I was the director of the Green Street Studios for a while in Cambridge. We are, thank you for hearing us today. We are petitioning for this change of occupancy so that we can bring a performing and visual arts cooperative community space to Fields Corner, located in the historic Dorchester Theater Building. Our mission is to provide affordable workspace to artists and educational program, programming for all ages, all abilities, goals, and intentions in the performing, visual, and healing arts. We, we will strive to tap into all the creativity and history and culture in Fields Corner. As a cooperative, we are capable of creating and recreating ourselves to meet the needs of our members and the needs of our community. We've already immersed ourselves in the community. We're collaborating with VIT Aid right now with...
Can we back up for a minute?
Yes.
So you're going to rent out desk space, you're going to provide practice rooms?
Yes.
Is it rooms, how many rooms are you proposing?
Can you give us? I believe there's seven rooms, or six or seven rooms.
Seven rooms? Okay. And is the building soundproofed? Are you proposing to have it soundproofed?
Yes, I will, I would like to let my, our general contractor speak more about that.
Okay.
Jesse Roselle, 42 Mill Street in Dorchester. Yep, it's, it's soundproof. You should be able to see in the specs, different wall specifications, forced out roofing.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick? Any questions from the board?
Have you engaged with Fields Corner Main Streets at all?
Yes. We have lot, there, we have a pile of letters of support here.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I am. I'm the director of Fields Corner Main Street. My name's Jackie West divine from 12 Buttonwood Street.
And you're in support?
I am. Fields Corner Main Street has the express mission of supporting small businesses and creating a secure and vibrant district and drawing visitors. We feel that IPAC will certainly provide dynamic and new programming that will serve our community well and will also draw visitors. I also wanted to say that Lorraine and Lucy are seasoned professionals and have a vast knowledge of dance. And in my experience with them, I've been on the job for eight weeks now and I, and concerns that I've raised and interests that I've raised, namely, one of our board members said that she had a niece that was going across the city to take K-pop classes and...
Hold on, right there.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. May I have representatives from the elected officials? Please have a seat, ma'am, and may I have representatives of, of elected officials speak?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Qua Van from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to record in support. This performing arts center is going to add another dynamic to the neighborhood and as well, they're receiving support from the local Main Street and the Civic. And another thing is to activate the underutilized space for 20, past 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dustin Gardner. On behalf of City Counselor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Joe McEckern. City Counselor Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley. Counselor Savi George's office. Like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Deborah Sousa, past president, secretary, and treasurer of the Fields Corner Civic Association. They came before us in December, our meeting, and we unanimously supported this project, and we are excited to have this as part of our community. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
It's now 10:30. I'm going to call the 10:30s. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Counselor, address, please.
3137 Beach Street.
For the record, calling BOA 102-8114, 31 to 37 Beach Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Lorraine Scatino from Richard Lynn's office, 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. We're requesting a short deferral. We were just asked to meet with the Chinatown Residents Association last week on this project.
Do you have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
We have a date of February 25th at 11:30.
Thank you.
25th. Are there any other def...
If anybody's here to speak on behalf in support or in opposition to 31 to 37 Beach Street, this has been deferred to February 25th.
Okay.
Can you please help us get the word out, February 25th at 11:30?
Okay.
Okay?
I just want to point out that there are a lot of people here in...
It's okay. It's okay. We're not gonna hear it until the 25th. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we also...
We'll be back.
We also have 125 Addison, which I'll call in for the record. Calling BOA 1006349, 125 Addison. That also is being deferred, and we have a date of 2/25.
And why is this being deferred? Is this for re-ad? Or is it a request for...
Yes, re-advertised.
Re-advertization. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for the pearl.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll rehear it on February 25th at 11:30.
Calling the next two cases. Calling BOA 103-4060, 10 Narragansett Street. There is a companion case, BOA 103-0857, 45 Minot Street. This is to construct... 10 Narragansett to construct a two-new-family residential building and a new lot created in the subdivision of 45 Minot Street. The violation, Article 65, Section 9, the lot size requires to erect a new dwelling is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the height is excessive. This is for 45... This is subdivide an existing 7,932 square foot lot at 45, creating two new lots consisting of 4,988 square feet at 45 Minot and 2,944 at 10 Narragansett. The violation is Article 65, Section 42, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the lot size to accommodate the dwelling and subdivision is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is James Christopher of RCALLC with the business address of 415 Nippon's at Avon, Dorchester. I'm joined at my right by William Maloney, lifelong resident and owner of the property. So the proposal is to subdivide the existing lot, creating two new lots, construct a new two-family on the newly-created 2,944 square foot lot. With that, we need...
And is that at 10 Narragansett?
That's at 10 Narragansett, correct.
Okay, so tell us about what impact it's gonna have on 45 Minot Street.
There's no change to the building itself at Minot Street.
Is that a two-family?
It is.
Okay.
We will be, at the request of the abutters, we will be seeking a new curb cut on Minot Street to create direct access to two parking spaces. That came about as a part of the community process. Other than that, there's no change to the existing property at 45 Minot.
Was there existing off-street parking in that?
Yes. If you look at the plans off of Narragansett Street, the driveway there was where Mr. Maloney parked his cars. So after meeting with the neighbors, we included the curb cut on Minot to create two new parking spaces on the side of the property so as to not interfere with the maneuverability of the parking of the new proposed lot.
And on Minot, how many bedrooms in each unit? Are they three bedrooms each unit?
The first floor is one bedroom and the second floor is two bedrooms.
Okay, three bedrooms, all told. Okay. So tell us about Narragansett then.
The proposal is to construct a two-unit building with parking in the rear. The rear portion of the building, we can't leave it with that. We need some zoning relief. The FAR, the required is .4. We'd be at .87. We'd be at three stories with the pitched roof. The required is two and a half stories. The rear yard setback is... The requirement is 25 feet. We're at 9'10". The front yard is 15 feet required. We're at 5'8", but that's following the modal. And the minimum usable open space required is at 750 square feet, and we'd be at 537 square feet.
So what are the unit sizes?
Unit 1 would have 409 square feet on the first floor with the parking at the rear of the property.
So that's just over 1,000 square feet for this unit 1?
Correct.
And unit 2 is 876?
Correct. 876 square feet, two-bedroom, one-bath unit.
And there's no roof decks proposed?
No roof decks. It's a pitched roof. As a part of the community process, this is originally a flat-roofed building. The neighbors had requested that Ms. Maloney take a look at the existing context of the neighborhood. So we did, and we were able to create this pitch roof, which we believe fits in a little more seamlessly. Mr. Maloney also reduced the square footage of the building to try to accommodate the neighbors. The original proposal was a little bit larger building with more habitable square footage. After the first abutters meeting and then again during the second, we continued to reduce the footprint to try to make it a little softer and more amenable for the neighbors.
So tell us about the common driveway. Will all of it be accommodated on Minot Street? Or will any of it be accommodated on Narragansett?
No. So the parking for Narragansett, we would create an easement off of Narragansett to create the parking for the Minot Street lot. We would provide a cross-easement to access the parking. The Minot Street parking for the 45 Minot Street would be accessed off of Minot Street.
Well, theoretically, you could access the Minot Street parking spaces for both drivers, right?
Yes. Yes, you could. I'm not sure that the maneuverability would meet that requirement.
Okay.
Physically, yes.
But the expectation is...
The expectation is to have Minot Street use Minot Street.
Because looking at the plans now, it looks like the residents of Minot Street might be losers because they will be losing, that's what I mean to say, losing with the subdivision because their rear entrance and rear balconies or rear windows are looking right into another dwelling and a driveway in proximity, and they gain nothing.
The resident of 45 Minot Street is Mr. Maloney and another tenant.
Maybe true today, but, you know, we know that the relief goes with the property. And so is there anything proposed to put some kind of, I don't know, fencing, something like that that will, in fact, you know, keep Minot Street as preserved as possible? Because it feels that, yes, you know, the maneuverability is planned so that everything works for Narragansett, you know, but nothing works really for Minot.
I have a question, too. The decks, these side decks, those are gonna be facing the rear of Minot Street, the ones coming off of Narragansett? They'd be facing the back?
No, they're just... They're small balconies off the bedroom. Yeah, they would be facing...
Facing the backside?
Facing the back of Minot. In regard to the screening and buffering, we'll certainly work with BPDA to create whatever we can for screening and buffering in that condition.
Because to pick up on Mr. Ehrlich's point, you know, the, you know, if there's cross-easement and if parking for both sites were accommodated off of Narragansett, that feels like that would work better for all concerned.
Yeah, we would certainly be open to that. This, and I think it would, we could accommodate it. This iteration came as a result of the community process. And so we thought it was a feasible option. It was what the neighbors requested, so we tried to work in that direction.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay.
Any further questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Vandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This went through a robust community process, including an onsite abutters meeting, followed up by two informal meetings held by the applicant. The applicant also met with the Pope Cell Civic Association, discussed his plans. There were initial concerns when this process began, but he worked hard to come to the current iteration, which met most of the abutters' concerns. There's several letters of support on file with the ZBA. We'd like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Joe McEckern, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record and support. The Maloney family has lived in Dorchester for decades. They've kept a beautiful property. They work very closely with the neighborhoods and very well-liked family, and we'd like to support them. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan.
On behalf of City Council, Michael Flaherty. Equally, the Senate members of Council, Baker's office. Council, go on record and support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. Would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
And can we focus BPDA design review not only on the new construction at Narragansett, but some screening or something to protect the house, the rear of the house at Minot Street?
The drawings are okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 101-4340, 51 Bicknell Street. This is demolition of the walls, installing new framing where needed, extending rear bedrooms, and install new roofline. The violation, Article 60, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient to erect a new rear deck. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Boards. My name is Derek Joyner, 119B Rentham Street, Boston, Mass. I'm seeking relief to renovate a residential 3-family in the Greater Matter Panzoning District in 3F 5,000 Sub District. The existing third-floor porch is a balcony without a second means of egress right now as it stands, and it doesn't meet the code. This proposal would be to rebuild the dilapidated porch with a similar style in the dimensions, and it would give it a second means of egress that wouldn't create a violation.
So the third unit is a legal third unit?
Yes.
How many square feet is it?
1,066 square feet, and that's a two-bedroom.
Okay, is it like in the form of a regular triple deck or is it a pitched roof?
No, it's a gable.
It's gable, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, it says on a note here. Are you putting a fire protection system in?
So we were only 28%, so it didn't require it.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Vandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of my colleague, Christine Brando, who ran the community process for this proposal, we'd like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council, Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. Would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Jeff, do you want design review on this?
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 101-4344, 29 Charlotte Street. Charlotte Street here?
Good morning.
Oh, you're doing that one, too? Okay.
Good morning, Madam...
Hold on a second, sir. Is a change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. Construct new dormers on the third floor, expand living space into the basement attic. The violation, Article 60, Section 9, a lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Derek Joyner, 119B Rentham Street, Boston, Mass. I'm seeking relief to renovate the two-family and convert it into a three-family in the Greater Matter Panzoning District, 3F 5,000 Sub District. So on this one...
So how many square foot is the lot? Because your only violation is the lot area for the additional dwelling unit.
That's 6,183 square feet.
So it's just a little bit short?
Yes.
So tell us about the dormer and the basement.
So this one is a gable dormer. The basement will be finished. The height in the basement is 9'3".
And what's the use in the basement?
This would be a one-bedroom, so it would be combined for the first floor, and the basement would be one unit.
How many square feet?
For the first unit would be 1,117.
And the third unit in the attic and the dormer? What are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich, in the meantime?
The drawings are okay. Do you know what the ceiling height is in the... You said the ceiling height in the basement. What about the attic?
The attic?
Yeah.
The attic is, we have 8'3".
Okay.
Is it just the attic that's the unit itself, the entire attic?
So it's the second floor in the attic, which would be unit 3.
Yeah. And how many square feet is that?
1,936 square feet.
So unit 2 must be pretty small.
So unit 2 is 1,000 square feet. So as it stands, unit 1 on the first floor, it would be split in half. Half of the first floor would be bi-level for the first floor and the basement for unit 1. And then unit 2 would also be the first floor split with the basement.
I see. Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Vandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of my colleague, Christine Brando, we'd like to go on record and support of this process, project.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council, Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, sorry, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. Would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Do you need design review on this one with the dormer?
Yeah, it is a dormer, so...
You want it?
Please.
Okay, with design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the last case for 9:30, calling BOA 999-087, 62 to 64 Boynton Street. This is to seek to raise the existing garage and erect a three-story building with three residential units and three parking spaces. The violation, Article 55, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling units insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with an address of 15 Broad Street, representing Tom Falcoochi, who's with me, the owner of 62-64 Boynton Street. And as was mentioned, the proposal is to raise the existing garages and to erect a three-story building with three condominium units and three rear parking spaces on the site. This particular zoning district is located in a 3F 5,000 district. Our lot size is 3,740 square feet. Our unit layouts, unit 1 is 1,100 square feet, two-bed, two-bath. Unit 2 is a 1,110 square foot, two-bed, two-bath with a rear deck. And unit 3 is 1,299 square foot, two-bed, two-bath, also with a rear deck. The violations mentioned, additional lot area required to be 2,000. We have 740 square feet. Our FAR is 1.08. What's allowable is .6. We meet the side setback on the right side with 12 feet. 10 is required. We are short on the left side, which is 7, and we have 5. And our minimum front yard is 15. We have 8, but it would be modal with the other buildings. We actually went through a number of changes on this project. We originally had two townhouses proposed in working with the neighbors and the JPNC. We got their support to change this to three condominiums with parking in the rear and some design changes with the bump outs on the front. We also increased our side setback in doing so and reduced our FAR from 1.2 down to 1.08. I can pause to answer any questions the board may have.
And so these are all two-bedroom units?
These are all two-bedroom units.
With rear decks?
With, yes.
Well, second and third floor, okay?
Two rear decks in the back.
And no roof deck?
No roof deck.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay. How does the height of the building compare to the adjacent buildings?
Where the other buildings are either bigger or because they're six-unit buildings, but they're all three-story. So we're actually a little bit lower. We're at 30 feet. They're like 31. They're contextually the same if you look at them.
And the garages are... Are they providing parking for any of the units around?
No, those like storage garages that were there before when he purchased the lot, so...
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Lindsay Santana with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My predecessor conducted a community process for this proposal. The applicant worked closely with the abutters to address concerns. They have received the support of the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Justin McClair from City Council, Madam O'Malley's office. We'd also like to go on record and support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. Would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the first case for 10:30, calling BOA 101-9134, 161 West Third Street. This is to build a new deck on top of the roof. Violates Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Alexander Sukemek, 161 West Third Street, South Boston.
So tell us what you're proposing to do?
We have an existing headhouse. We'd like to add a roof deck to that headhouse. So our request is to allow the headhouse to be the egress in and out of the roof deck.
So tell me, is this new construction?
It is not. It is not, it's an existing building.
And how long, and was the headhouse built with or without a permit?
That headhouse was built with a permit.
Was built with a permit?
Yes.
When?
Original construction.
When was that?
I don't remember, nineteen twenty-something.
Okay, so it was...
Madam Chair, there is a violation comment next to it, I'm sorry, I should have read it into the record. An open roof deck may be erected on the main roof of the building with a flat roof, provided that the access is provided by a roof hatch.
Can you say that again, Mr. Fortune?
Yeah. There was an additional note next to it, I'm sorry. It says, "An open roof deck may be erected on the main roof of a building with flat roof, provided that the access is provided by a roof hatch."
Then it goes on to say, unless the Board of Appeal grants zoning relief through Article 6 for a headhouse.
For the headhouse, yep.
So if they didn't have a headhouse, they could build a roof deck by hatch by right.
Right.
But since the headhouse is already existing, they're kind of stuck.
So how are the plans, Mr. Olick, with the headhouse?
Well, I mean, you know, it's kind of unfortunate, frankly, that there's an existing headhouse, because it's fairly big.
Is it more, as the applicant, is it there as a room, or is it just purely for access? How large is it?
How large is the headhouse, or...
It's five, five feet by eight feet.
So five by eight feet?
Five by eight?
I think so, yeah. It's just the access to the roof.
I do have some pictures if you guys would like to see.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, if you have something, you can take a look at it.
And the headhouse is at the rear of the building?
Yes, it is. And my name, there's two buildings that are connected, have the same headhouse, and they have decks on them as well today.
Maybe we'll take some too. Just to get my...
I'm sorry, I have more pictures, I apologize.
That's all right, we can share.
There's also the same headhouse with roof decks that abut my building today.
And when was this headhouse built?
It was original to the building.
Twenty-six, I'm not sure they had headhouses up there, but...
I'm not sure when it was built, but I've owned the building for five years, and it's been there the entire time.
Okay. I mean, I think this may have been the reason why there were regulations put in place on those headhouses. The historic reason. Don't laugh, Jeff.
I'm not laughing.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held an Butters meeting on January 6th, in which none of the Butters seemed to care or show up, and we haven't seen anybody emailing me that they couldn't make the meeting, so we go on record in support, thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. The issue with headhouses is this board basically prefers hatches rather than headhouses, because it's less disruptive to the skyline and the roofline.
But there's nothing to prevent us putting design review on that headhouse.
So there are modifications that can be made, including a sloped roof, that would leave the footprint in place, and would actually be relatively minor. It is an existing headhouse, so I understand that that's, you know, probably not part of your plans, but we, as a board, are trying as much as possible to limit the visual disruption of headhouses on roofs around the city. So I would make a motion to approve with BPDA design review to look at the possibility of modifying the existing headhouse.
No second.
And we'll be a bit more radical than Mr. Olick, not the possibility, but with the modification of that red house. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 954-514, 194 to 200 Sharret Avenue.
Thank you.
The applicant seeks to continue use premises for an open-air public parking lot for a fee. Capacity of eighty-nine vehicles beyond the existing Board of Appeal decision, which was granted to expire on July 1st of 2019. Violation is Article 6, Section 03A. Additional conditions in restricted parking district, relief is required from the Board of Appeal. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project. My business address is 142 Berkeley Street in Boston. On my far right is Christian Bryan, who's the landscape designer for the project in my office. And next to me is David Gottlieb, who represents the owner of the property.
So before we continue, Mr. Gottlieb, is this the project that we had an issue with in Bay Village?
It's not in Bay Village, it's actually on Sharret Avenue in East Berkeley Street.
In Sharret and East Berkeley?
In the South End.
Because I happen to be walking in the South End yesterday, and your parking project, the one that we had an issue with a year and a half ago, popped to mind. And did that ever come back to us, because it was supposed to be a project that you were supposed to be working with the owner to do landscaping and come back to us with a landscaping plan?
This is the project, and you asked me about this project in March. And what happened is, we had to go through South End Landmarks Commission Design Review, and that took all of 2019 to do.
So did this property owner cease to work this as a parking lot, or not? Or did it continue use as a parking lot since the variance had expired on it?
Well, we actually went before the board, and you said to come back to us, and that's what we did.
So it took you a year to come back to us?
Correct, because if you look at the past decision, there was no mention that we had to go through Landmarks Commission Review. But when we went to ISD, they said, "No, you have to go through Landmarks." So then we went through Landmarks, and we had two public meetings at Landmarks. I'm going to provide you with evidence of those. And then we actually had a public subcommittee meeting at Landmarks with Nicholas Armada and two members of the commission, who actually came to the property in person and said, "This is what you need to do to be in compliance."
This was a timely thought about you, thinking about you yesterday, so that's good.
Yes, so let me explain to you the process. So in April, we actually had the Landmarks Commission hearing for the fence in the dumpster enclosure.
So this green thing I'm looking at is the dumpster enclosure?
Correct, and that was in response to, as you remember, I think in December of 2018, we had a meeting here, and a neighbor wrote a letter regarding trash at the premises, presence of trash. So me working with the architect and the tenant, which I represent, Stan Hope Garage, we put together a plan for a dumpster enclosure. We took it before the Landmarks Commission, and they approved the plan, but they wanted the color of the dumpster enclosure to be Essex green, per the Landmarks Commission requirement, so it fits in with the neighborhood. So in April 5th, 2019, we got a Landmarks Commission approval for the fence in the dumpster enclosure. Nicholas Armada then told us, "Come back with the landscaping plan." We, working with Timothy Burke and Christian, put together a thorough landscaping plan. We then had another Landmarks Commission meeting at City Hall with the plan. We spoke to the commission members regarding the plan, and they said, "Well, you know, make a few improvements," which we did. Then Nicholas said, "I would like to come down, I think it would be easier, let's come down in person," with two other commission members, which they did. I believe that was Mr. Sandborn and Catherine Hunt. And they came in person, that was in June. They told us exactly what they wanted to do in terms of the plantings, how they wanted a cedar board on Sharret Avenue and on East Berkeley Street.
They wanted the what, sorry?
A cedar board to hold in the mulch and the plantings on Sharret Avenue and East Berkeley Street, which we installed. And that's basically been the process. We've been down there almost every month, making sure everything was up to par, and...
And these photos here are from where?
Those photos are of both the dumpster enclosure and also the landscape. I can run you through them if you have any particular questions.
Did South End Landmarks have, okay, okay?
We're in the protection district, so they wanted to review it.
No, I'm fine with it. I was just wondering if there was something that, you know, since these are summer plants, if there was anything that would be more year-round?
The other key point, Madam Chair, is that per the December 2018 decision, it just said BPDA Design Review. Worked with Matthew Martin extensively throughout this whole process. Matthew Martin approved us in July of 2019. So we've actually gone through two agencies here. We went through Matthew Martin for BPDA. He approved us July of 2019. We then went through the Landmarks Commission, working with the design people there, both Nicholas Armada and now Mary Serba, and that was approved in the fall. So you're going to see two letters that I sent to Nicholas Armada showing the work we've done. So we've gone through two agencies now.
It's fine, you've got to do the right thing, because I think we mentioned that to you when you were here the first time around.
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
What were the Landmarks Commission recommendations?
Centered around the color of the fencing that we created around the dumpster, and then mostly the planting plan, which was carefully reviewed with Landmarks. The plants are designed to be hardy without a lot of watering, since there's no water on site. And they also are mostly pollinators, so it'll benefit the community gardens across the street.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We were also very concerned in making sure that this was done right, and that no corners were cut, and that we wanted clear-cut standards around how the types of garages that this operator is operating across different neighborhoods also matched what was here. So thank you for working with us on that, and at this time, we have no further concerns. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support of this proposal. As we spoke with residents who had no concerns, and the East Street Neighborhood Association sent a letter of non-opposition. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Now, let me just get some clarification. The capacity has always been eighty-nine vehicles.
Eighty-nine vehicles, correct.
And with the screening and buffering, did it reduce it in any way?
It's the same eighty...
It does, it did not, okay?
Same eighty-nine vehicles.
May I have a motion, please?
What was the last, like, when you were approved last time?
They just said...
Two years, because usually you put a time limit, so may I have a motion?
Motion to approve, a two-year period.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, see you in two years.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-9773, 97 to 115 Beverly Street. This is a change of occupancy from a hotel, residential, and retail parking garage to hotel with live entertainment, residential, retail, and parking garage. A violation is Article 49, Section 9.1A. Live entertainment use is a forbidden use in a zoning sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Rashii Monglik with Victor McColtian Miller, and this is Natasha Casillo. She is the applicant at 97 to 115 Beverly Street. This is an appeal for the courtyard Maria at downtown North End to add live entertainment as a pretty standard offering for hotels similarly situated in the area throughout the city of Boston. There is no construction or any plans that are changing. We did extensive, well, when zoning was gone through the Article 80 process, there was extensive community outreach done in 2012. And I confirmed with the previous ONS liaison, Maria Lanza, on this project, and she confirmed that community outreach was complete, given the extensive outreach done during licensing as well as zoning prior to this.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Who's the architect on this project?
There's no construction, so...
So these are just existing plans?
Yes, they were stamped, but yes, they're existing plans.
Just internal...
I actually don't see a stamp.
Oh, okay, I have a copy.
In the meantime, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this. It is consistent with the community conversations that happen during the Article 80 process. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion? Oh, sorry, Mr. Olick? Have satisfactory plans?
Sorry, it's a small copy.
I mean, I've got the same thing, it's illegible stamp, but again, these are just existing drawings, so... Have your architect give you a better stamp next time, okay?
Okay, appreciate it.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the last case for 10:30, calling BOA 102-9609, 567 to 569 Bennington Street. This is a change of use from a two-family and store to a two-family and seating restaurant with to go. The violation is Article 53, Section 8, restaurant use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jan Gray, 19 Burma Street, Boston, Mass., 0218.
Madam Chair, board members, Steve Sherry, 567 Bennington Street, East Boston.
Tell us what's being proposed?
So we are proposing, how this came about is, we decided to start serving dinner at the same location. So Sammy Carlos Delicatessen has been operating, it's the oldest deli in East Boston since 1927. It moved locations to 567 Bennington Street in October of 1974, and opened up as a delicatessen and a sit-down restaurant.
So this is for takeout use at the spot?
It was, correct. However, it's been operating as a sit-down restaurant since 1974. When we went ahead and put in paperwork to apply for a common vic on behalf of the Licensing Department, they discovered that there was a clerical error where the city of Boston has been down, they've granted outside seating. Everyone knows it's been a sit-down restaurant for forty-six years, and we just discovered that it had never been granted that ability. So we discovered this and wanted to immediately fix that issue. We went through the neighborhood process, applied with full support of the neighborhood, and now we're in front of you, so we can move forward with continuing to operate.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawings are straightforward, so this is just legalizing an existing condition?
Exactly, yep.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in full support, thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi Georgie's office, would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, second.
And is this with the usual takeout language? To this petitioner only? And then also marking of the napkins, et cetera, with your logo, so we know? But it'll be the usual takeout language?
So it was, it's operating and legally allowed to operate as it to go.
But now that you're here, this just puts a slightly additional step on, but this is something we do for every takeout, okay? So it's nothing exceptional to you?
But we are okay to do sit-down service, correct?
Yeah, it's not removing your sit-down, it's adding your takeout with some additional...
Got it, no problem at all, thank you so much.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Madam Chair, board members, thank you.
It is now 11:20. The board will take a 10-minute break and will resume at 11:30. Anybody who's here requesting withdrawal or deferral, please make sure you're...
646-472 East Fourth Street. There's also Companion Case, BOA 913-653-472 East Fourth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way. Madam Chair, requesting a deferral. We had filed substitute plans reducing the requested room count from six to five, and resulted in the plan examiner issuing a new refusal letter, and have been advised that this requires publication.
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
You have a date of March 10th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor address, please.
Yes, 361 Belgrade Ave. and Roselandale, and its companion case at 371 Belgrade Ave.
For the record, calling BOA 954-709-361-BELGRADE. There's a companion case, BOA 954-714-371-BELGRADE. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott Quillton Miller, 28 Sate Street, here in Boston. Here to request a deferral, as is the common practice. This is an Article 80 case that is still under review with the BPDA. We were last before this board for the first official deferral of this on August 8th, and since that time, we're pleased that there has been some progress with respect to...
So you're requesting a deferral today?
Yes.
What number is this?
This would be the second deferral.
So it sounds like, in the period of time that this has been in the process, you still have not received a BPDA hearing date.
Correct.
Maybe you... The fact of the matter is, maybe the paperwork for our appeal was filed too early. So I'm thinking that maybe, instead of having you come here, time and again, bringing all the students out here, bringing residents, that perhaps what we do is actually have you reapply at a date that's closer to when you actually think the BPDA will hear your case. So I think it might be, you know, might be judicious of us to have a motion for denial without prejudice, so you can come back and file whenever you need to file.
May I suggest...
Yes, please.
Respectfully, that would be slightly unusual with respect to how this board has handled numerous other matters in the past. We were instructed, in fact, at the first appearance that we had here, that you would not take us before concluding with Article 80.
That still stands.
What has changed now, if you will. Although myself and my client feels like this has been protracted. We are reminded upstairs that it hasn't necessarily been protracted, and the BPDA has said that they are still processing this. You now have a new district city counselor, whose staff is here, who has written and indicated its support for this project. And so, in my view, and for my client's rights,
Thank you.
we are asking for one final deferral of a couple months, so that we can finish this process, hopefully. I don't control, as you know, when things are marked up, when we file and the like. We went through the regular process, but I wouldn't want us to be unfairly treated from a process standpoint, respectfully.
Let me respond to that. There is nothing unfair about the process. What we need to look at is our docket and our project, and the number of times we request that people come out here, you know, either here or at the BPDA. So I think, instead of us just taking and protracting this, may I have a motion for denial without prejudice?
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice, which allows you to come back and do the proposed record.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you when you're really ready, and we look forward to hearing from students and from neighborhood.
Thank you.
Address?
46 Bellamy Street.
Bellamy Street?
Bellamy Street, excuse me.
For the record, calling BOA 101-912-466-BELLAMY STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Alec Benelli from Pulgenia Norton, 10 Forbes Road.
Can you speak up, please?
Alec Benelli from Pulgenia Norton, 10 Forbes Road.
Okay, you're requesting a...
Deferral, please.
Deferral, okay. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
You'll have a date of March 24th.
March 24th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Thank you. Address, sir?
118 Harrishoff Street, Roxbury.
For the record, calling BOA 956-971-118-HARRISHOFFSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Prince Callum, 78 Standard Street, Mary Penn, Nice.
So is this your second or a third request for deferral?
Second.
This is your second request, and you're requesting a deferral today?
Yes.
For what reason?
I was unable to file the plan with ISD. The plan is done, but I didn't have enough time, because I traveled. I had personal issues. I traveled. And then the owner also requested that, because it's indisposed. It can't be here.
This is, I'm going to tell you, the last request for deferral that we will entertain. So please make sure that you get everything squared away.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
You'll have a date of March 24th at 11:30.
Can you give earlier date, like in February?
No, we are pretty backed up. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Hearing none, I'll call the first case for 11:30. First two cases. Case BOA 101-8347, 36 to 40 Sprague Street. There is a companion case, BOA 101-8350, 38 to 40 Sprague Street. Sprague Street here. They got it. Well, they're going to hold off to the side.
It's an Article 80. They got it.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 907-831-75G STREET. Are you here, G Street? Be with me for two seconds, here. This is to confirm it occupancy as a three-family dwelling, store, and change to a four-unit multifamily. Demolish a single-story merchant building attached to the main house. Move an existing accessory stable and garage to the back of the lot, and build a new one-unit building attached to an existing main house. Violation to Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restricted district. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article 10, Section 1, the limitation of air accessory structures cannot occupy more than 25% of the required rear yard setback. Article 27P, Section 5, it's in the South Boston iPod. Article 68, Section 34, accessory structures cannot be located closer than 65 feet to the front lot line. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Daniel Toscano from Dregon Toscano's Attorneys at Law, located at 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass. 02109. I'm here representing Fabian De Souza, who's the owner of the property at 75 G Street, which is to my far right. And to my immediate right is the architect of the property, Doug Stephanoff, to talk about a few preliminary issue in regards to the three-family. So this process, I know on the description, is to confirm it as a three-family residential dwelling and a store. This process back in June of 2018, so well over a year and a half ago. Occupancy committees went out there, done their inspection. I do have confirmation that it's already confirmed as a three-family in the storefront. So we don't need confirmation for a three-family. It's already an existing three-family in the storefront. In addition to the existing stable, there's a stable that sits behind the one-story storefront that's on this property. The original plan was to demolish that stable. However, working with landmarks and some city officials, it was recommended, because of the stable and the stable doors were over a year... 100 years old, that we would relocate that stable. So we're going to relocate that stable to the back of the property. By doing so, we trigger two of the five zoning violations that you see on zoning code refusal. One is the accessory building is more than 25% of our rear yard. And the second one, it's within 65 feet of our front yard. So by taking the recommendation of landmarks and city officials, by moving that, we trigger two zoning code violations. Moving forward, so simply, what are we doing here? We're changing the storefront, which has been vacant for many years, and it was vacant at the time Mr. De Souza purchased the property. And we're changing that to a residential unit. So we want to go from a three-family residential unit in commercial space to four-family residential unit. They're going to be condominiums for sale. And we also have... So I'll talk about the other violations by filing a long-form application. So we're going to demolish the existing storefront, which is the one-story building. And we're going to add a three-story, single unit to that location. The three-story property is not going to be... Doesn't violate any height restrictions, but it does trigger a roof structure violation.
So you're putting a new deck off of a widow's walk?
I'll talk about the existing three-family when we renovate that. So I'm just talking about the storefront.
Okay.
Just talking about the storefront. We're going to demolish the existing storefront and build a single unit. And that's going to be three-story unit, 2,000 square foot, two-bedroom, two-bath. And that's going to be consistent height. It's going to be about 33 feet high. And it's going to be consistent to what you see on G Street. And there's also going to be open space that's not on the roof, but kind of a walkout patio to meet our open space requirement. In regards to the existing three-family, what we're doing, we're renovating the existing floor plan. We're changing them to two-bedrooms, two-baths, and we're creating some open space. We're creating, putting some dormers on the top on the left-hand side, which overlooks Thomas Park, and creating some living space for that particular unit. So that unit's going to be a two-bedroom, two-bath, about 930-some square feet. The others are going to be roughly 800-and-some square feet. And by doing all this, we're actually decreasing the bedroom count from the existing bedroom count to a little bit lower, to what we're doing with the proposal. The other violation is the front yard. There is no...
It's a corner lot.
It's a corner lot, so we have five feet from the front on G Street. We do not... We're actually at zero lot line on that, and we're going to remain there. So it's a pre-existing condition. And that's inconsistent with the number of units of buildings going down G Street. So we're at 75. If you go to 73, 71, and 69, they all have a zero front yard lot line. So we're being consistent with currently what's there existing and what's in that neighborhood. As you go further down G Street, they do have a setback, but right our abutters, we're at a zero lot line, so we're keeping the same. We can go forward and talk about...
Yes, let's just ask you a couple of questions. I'm looking at A2.02. Can you please explain what's going on in this?
Okay, I'm going to defer it to Doug Stephanoff, the architect, who can answer the question in regards to...
Yes, on 2.02, we're looking at the side of the relocated stable garage to the left, and then one of the gable ends of the existing three-family house. And up above the garage, roof of the garage, you see the back of the new addition, which is in plain with the face of the existing building.
So is there residential use... So there is residential use in the garage?
No, no. The garage will be purely for parking and trash and storage.
Okay, so why does it... What is this? Am I just reading this wrong? So I see something that says "existing garage." Explain this drawing to me, because it says garage. So I see something that looks like a deck on an isolated building.
The deck's actually on the new addition. If I can bring you back to a plan, can I have you go back to A1.05, second floor plan?
Okay.
So this is the... To the right is the new addition. It's two stories in the back. And to the left, facing Thomas Park, you see the walkout deck. So that's part of the open space for the second floor. And to the back of the lot is the relocated garage.
And... Go ahead.
In addition, so I think, what's the stairwell and the door that looks like it's on the second story of the garage?
We're just adding an access hatch to the attic of the garage for storage.
Why do you need that?
Well, it exists. There's an existing attic now.
There is. So it's going to be external access, not internal access?
No, there's no stairs. There's just an internal hatch to get to the attic.
Are you reading what I'm reading?
Yeah, right on the 2.02.
Which drawing?
2.02.
So there's... Looks like the stairs that goes up and a deck, and then a little door here on the garage.
Oh, that's the neighboring building.
Oh, okay.
That's 73. That's not part of this project.
Okay, it is labeled that it says... Oh, okay, I see.
See the arrow pointing?
Yep.
Sorry.
Okay. And then it looks like you have parking sprinkled all over the lot.
Yes, we actually... We have an existing curb cut, which the neighbors asked us to leave alone. And we're able to put vehicles in a variety of places within a setback on the lot. But there's actually fairly decent parking.
So, let me just... So is parking one of your violations?
It is not. We need to...
It is not?
...a violation. It is not a violation. And the stable is going to be, as part of the agreement with abutting neighbor, the stable is also going to be sprinkled as part of the agreement, so...
Because the... Basically, the parking, because it's a corner lot, the parking right at that corner, that spot, I don't know. Can you accommodate it anyplace else?
Well, there's another parking space, which doesn't show a car, immediately above the entrance. So we do have four that would be drive-in, drive-out. That one situated on the corner is nicely located to the curb cut. So it actually is very easy maneuverability.
Now, the question, though, is, you know, could it, for the lack... For one parking spot relocated somewhere else on the parcel, could that, in fact, present a better view to the neighborhood of a front yard, rather than seeing a vehicle and somebody's front door there with, you know, a car outside the dining room, or whatever window that is?
We can rearrange the parking, so...
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
John Olick.
Any questions from the board?
The storefront that's there currently, because it's being used, hasn't been used?
It's been vacant since he purchased it, so...
No, it's not part of the register. So like, the building and the garage are in the registry. It's contributing buildings to the Thomas Park District. The merchant building is not.
Okay.
So it's not in great shape.
But it has not been used. It's not...
It's been vacant for five years.
Okay. And that's the yellow building?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hello, for the record, my name is Sheila Dillon, and I'm speaking on behalf as a resident, not as my job in the administration. So I live at 45 G Street. And while I know that there are still some outstanding issues on this project, and you may hear about those, I just want to go on record to say that I'm very pleased that the historic structure is being saved, as well as the barn. This is a very historic, beautiful neighborhood. And as development pressures come into all neighborhoods, we are seeing demolitions that we don't... We're not happy with. So I do feel like the developer has taken our concerns about demolition very seriously. So I just wanted to go on the record and say that. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in opposition. We know it's been a lengthy process, and he's worked with the abutters over the time, over, I think, almost three years now. But as of our record, we have no record of people in support who are direct abutters. Thank you.
Does that mean they're in opposition, or just no one has voiced support?
We're in strong opposition.
Okay.
Madam, over the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal, as we have heard from neighbors and abutters who remain opposed. We acknowledge all the work that was done by the team and the compromises that were made on both sides. It was originally six units, then down to five, then now it's down to four units. However, we continue to receive feedback from abutters about remaining of quality of life issues, such as the height, density, and that could potentially obstruct light from neighbors, the number of bedrooms and rooms that may be converted into bedrooms, and relocation of the parking area. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor Abi George's office. Would like to go on record in opposition of this project. And we've also heard from the Civic Association, Gate of Heaven Civic, in the neighborhood, and they strongly oppose also. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, I'll be opposite Counselor Lodge, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Counselor Flynn's office, as well as the opposition that we've received from neighbors, as well as the 123 violations under Article 68. The counsel would like to go on record in opposition.
Is anybody else here to speak in opposition? Any abutters? Please take off your hats, sir, so we can see you.
You're one step ahead of me. I'm sorry. My name is John Carter. I grew up across the street from the project. I've lived in the house for 59 years. I've always known this as a two-family house. And as the previous people stated, it went from six to five to four. And I had some questions as to how it became a three. I went downstairs at the last meeting that got deferred on technicality. Something wasn't written right on the mailing. And I have the tax records in my hand that there was never paid taxes as a three-family, as a date. I have the records right here. I paid the $5 downstairs.
So tell me what your opposition is based on. Is the opposition based on the fact that it's a two-family?
Well, if it was a two-family, like it's been my whole life, then they would have to have parking. They want to take the store down and build a building in equal size to existing building. They've reduced the number of units, but not the size of the project. It's a busy neighborhood. You've got South Boston Heights with 20 buses, in the morning and in the afternoon. You've got Marion Man around the corner, and Dorchester Heights, too, the historic site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
You name an address?
Hi, my name's Jackie Cherry. I'm an abutter. I've lived in the neighborhood, 5409 East Fourth Street. I live right around the corner. I've lived there my whole life. As you people well know, that the parking is a serious problem here. And if you look at the plans, and you actually went out and looked at the lot, it's almost that one car on the side there. I don't know how it's going to get in or out. It just doesn't make sense.
What's your opposition?
Okay, one other point that I'd like to make is that when we had an abutters meeting, we were told that they could put seven cars there, and we were given the plans, okay, by these gentlemen. So myself and Mr. Carter went over to ISD, and on the plans, there were four cars. So I thought it was very unfair for the neighbors to be given a bill of goods that you could put seven cars on the plans. So as it stands right now, those four cars, at best, you could probably put two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So on a technical basis, how many cars are you proposing on site?
We're proposing four cars, Madam Chair. And Mr. Cherry is a little bit...
And that responds to the parking requirements? So you're meeting the parking requirement?
We're meeting the parking requirement. We don't have a violation. Part of the plans, when we originally proposed the parking, there were... We had numerous abutter meetings.
And...
And they required us to... They wanted us to have more parking. Then we proposed...
Okay, so, hold on, hold on. So we get that you meet the parking requirement. The second thing is taxes. Has taxes been paid as a three or a four?
It's been paid as a three.
Taxes have been paid as a three? For how long? How long have you owned the property?
I've owned the property since 2015.
Yeah?
And as soon as we realized that it was needed as a single family from the previous owner, we went ahead and we made the change. We had the city come in, and they looked at the unit. There were three meters, three gas meters, three electric meters separate. Three kitchens, and...
So you legalized that?
Well, it was...
Yes, we did. In June of 2018, it was signed off by the City of Boston Inspector.
I may say one more thing, ma'am.
Yes. Put your name and address on the record. I don't think you got it.
Yes, I'm Fabian De Souza, living at 4 Wellington Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to say is, I talked with National Grid, and I have a letter from them, which is part of our submission, to show that there were individual meters put in from 1992 onwards.
Okay. So, hold on, sir.
Yeah.
So, okay, so given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, can I submit, I do have letters of support.
Absolutely.
Seven letters of support from abutters also. We did attend, based on the elected officials' recommendation, the Dorchester Heights Neighborhood Association, and they did vote unanimously and supported this project in regards to Counselor George, in regards to the Gate of Heaven Association. I don't believe if we ever attended that meeting, but thank you.
Okay, I know things get...
Thank you.
...antsy after a little while. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are you going?
Yes.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 981-842-1269, Massachusetts Avenue. This is to increase the occupancy load of an existing restaurant from 88 to 136. Install a new fire sprinkler system, install a new side door. The violation is Article 65, Section 41. Offstreet parking is insufficient. Article 9, Section 1, extension of nonconforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have some packets here, just to hand you. Thank you. No problem. There you go.
So you are the... What was the name of the restaurant?
It's The Home Run Cafe, Madam Chair. My name is Mike Ross. I'm an attorney at Prince Lobel. One international place. I'm here with Hector Villar, who is the owner of The Home Run Cafe, located at 1269 Massachusetts Avenue. This is a one-story building that is 2,400-plus square feet. And our plan, and our reason for being in front of you today, as we want to... As mentioned, is we want to increase the seat count from 88 to 136, an additional 48 seats on the site. And that triggers an extension of a nonconforming use, as well as an off-street parking violation. Mr. Villar has obtained the support... He was actually in front of you in November on a...
Yes, but I'm not sure we had the details to...
That's right. That's right. That's right. He bought the property, and he bought the business in 2015. He rents the property from the owner of the property. This is the old Venetian garden. For some of you, you may remember that one. And in 2015, converted to The Home Run Cafe with the 88 seats. He's since done the requisite amount of work to allow for the increase in capacity by adding sprinklers and egress to comply with the code. That was actually why he was in front of you in November, kind of oddly. I don't think that building, which you... The board rightfully dismissed right away, and asked him to return here with just a little bit more information. That's when I ran into Mr. Villar, and we are now here on those two zoning matters. We also have a lot of support from the McCormick Civic Association that I'd like to provide to the board as well.
Okay, so tell us, first of all, this space is handicapped accessible, right?
That's correct.
And that in this new plan, there's been a second... A third door put into place. Two side doors now, instead of the first one, you put in the ceiling heights. Okay, and so it looks like it's purely an increase in capacity? No additional entertainment?
No, we're not adding. We already have a 37 use and a 38 use. So we already have that. We will have to go to the licensing board once we receive zoning approval to amend the license.
And is this space, what is that called, soundproofed?
Has the place been soundproofed? It was state-of-the-art build-out. Did you add soundproofing to the property?
Yeah, my guy had a twin-door stable. It was a little bit tough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, some of the work that he did also on the front door, improving the access points. I actually went out there myself to take a look at it. It's a nicely... They did a good job on the build-out. And he hasn't received complaints from his neighbors. In fact, he has had support from his abutters.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The door is fine. It's mostly just a fire sprinkler system.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Vandell, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. This did go through a robust community process, including the onsite abutters meeting and the applicant meeting with the McCormick Civic Association. He's done an incredible job working with the neighborhood on everything from parking to his operations onsite. We'd like to go on record in full support of this proposal.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to echo the sentiments in the mayor's office and go on full support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 100-0990, 48 to 50 L Street. Is L Street here?
Yeah.
This is to confirm, there's a six-family interior and exterior renovation of an existing six-unit building. Construct a new rear addition and third floor on the existing second-floor footprint. Exterior rear deck, exterior stairway and roof deck. Extend living space to the basement. Violation to Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston iPod. Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restriction. Article 68, Section 8, floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Greg McCarthy, 4850 L Street.
What's being proposed? It looks like there's a lot of little work that's going on here. What does it add up to?
So the existing square footage is 3570.
Is that of the building?
That's of the, no, the gross of the building is, I think...
So let's begin. What's the lot size?
Lot size is 2,499.
3,499?
Uh, 2,499.
2,499. And then what's the current occupancy?
Six units.
It's currently six units, okay. And is there any basement occupancy?
No.
So tell us about the extension to the basement.
So the extension to the basement, it's adding about 400 square feet to each side. One side a little bit less with the, a little bit of the space being taken up by the utilities. Most of the utilities is in a crawl space. That's also an extension of the basement.
So is it accessible externally, or is it accessible through the, through the units?
Externally.
Okay. And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Floor-to-ceiling height in the basement is eight feet, I believe.
Eight feet? Are you confirming that it's eight feet?
I am right now. Sorry.
Let's come back to that.
Okay.
Because I still have that here. Tell us about the rear addition. How big is that proposed rear addition?
Uh, there's no rear addition. There's, the third floor is a little bit smaller than the first and second floor. So we're extending the footprint onto the existing.
And how many square foot is that?
It's about 180 square feet on each side, so total of 360.
Okay. And then you're proposing a rear deck. Is on what floor is that?
Uh, so one, two, and three, all three will have rear decks, all three floors. And it's, it's not extending any further into the rear. It's actually in between the two buildings. The, the way it's built, the back, there's a, kind of like a courtyard in the middle, that it'll...
Okay, I get it. And then you're proposing a roof deck?
Yes.
Tell us about that.
So the roof deck will be on the backside of the building, accessible from the back deck of Unit 3.
So it's not through a hatch or a...
Not through a hatch, through exterior.
Or anything like that, okay. And so, again, let's see. So your violations are roof, FAR, and side yard. So it sounds like your side yard violation is because of the existing. You're not extending further FAR. You're adding about 800 square feet. So what's that doing to your FAR?
So I think we're at like one, sorry, we're like 1.7 or 1.6, or 1.5?
And then the roof deck. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
I just did that map now, but it'd be a little bit...
Yep. And so there are six units. Tell us the breakdown and the square footage.
Sure. There's four one-bedroom units that are each about 500, 500 and 550 square feet.
550 square feet?
Uh, two are 500, two are 550. And a, two-bedroom duplexes on the first and basement level, which are about 850 to 900 square feet.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are okay. I don't see anything that shows the ceiling height in the basement, so...
I didn't either, but it is eight feet.
Okay. And the units are just above the minimum of standards.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
The, the exterior access to the roof deck, is that? Like, is it, because I don't see any, I don't have any drawings in front of me. Is it like, want, like, can you walk from the ground and go like up every deck?
No.
All the way to the roof?
It's just from the third floor.
And the third floor is not connected to the second floor?
Correct.
So there's an independent second means of egress, in other words?
So the, we have a two-inch line coming in for the sewer system? I'm sorry, for the sprinkler system?
No, okay. Mr. Olick, there's a second means of egress internal to the building, then?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
The access to the roof deck is sort of more horizontal than vertical.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At our abutters meeting, three abutters showed up, and they all just had questions that they were answered and no concerns. Thank you.
Madam of the chair, Members of the board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support. The abutters meeting went well, and we've had no concerns from residents and civic groups regarding this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 100-5906, 135 Mount Vernon Street. This is a remodel kitchen, kitchenette bathrooms, install new HVAC systems, update electrical paint. Violation to Article 32, Section 9, G-Cod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Brian Jesse, 135 Mount Vernon Street.
Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Christian Smenelli, Boston Garden Trust, and we have the BWSC approval letter.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry to keep you hanging around so long.
Calling the next two cases. Calling BOA 100-3594, 138 Trenton Street. There's a companion case, BOA 102-80140, 138 Trenton Street. Is Trenton Street here? We'll hold them off to the side as well. Calling the next case, calling BOA 942-611-193 to 195 Chelsea Street. This is a change of occupancy from three tenants to store to lodging house. This is a three-story building outfitted for safety. Every unit is equipped with fire escape, ceiling sprinklers. Violation to Article 53, Section 8, lodging house is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, to my right is Priscilla Matos, one of the property owners, and her husband, Jordan LaFaro. Madam Chair, this is a request to change the occupancy of the existing three-family dwelling to lodging house. The basis of this application is grounded in large part upon the changes in the short-term rental policy for the City of Boston. Specifically, as this board is aware, the City of Boston has enacted an ordinance relative to the use of properties for anything that involves short-term rental or rental that is less than 28 days, 28 days out of the month. The only way to lawfully and permissibly operate such a building in this manner would be to change the zoning to, in this case, a conditional use, which is not necessarily forbidden under Article 53. Ms. Matos and Mr. LaFaro have experience in operating buildings such as this, but based upon the change in what's occurring with the city ordinance, they would need to properly have this zone in order to...
But please tell me, is lodging house a word for something else? Or is it a lodging house as we historically know a lodging house?
Lodging house would be exempt under the Airbnb regulations, and therefore, the only way to lawfully operate a non-owner-occupied structure would be to have it properly zoned. I suspect that there's many...
So a lodging house is for people staying more than 28 days?
Or, or could be less. Or could be less.
Or it could be less.
That's correct. The model here, six months out of the year, this property could be rented typically as a 30-day month-to-month rental. There is a window during the course of the year that they would operate this business, that there is potential for less than 28 days. As I said, I think that, you know, with the change in the Airbnb and short-term rental regulations, my guess is there are many who either won't go through the process, but in this particular case, they want to ensure that they're complying with the requirements. So the fact that you cannot register a non-owner-occupied building under the regulations would require a change in use. So in order to ensure that they're in compliance with the zoning regulations, that's the request. We did have an opportunity to present this robustly through the community process. The Maverick Central Neighborhood Association had a full presentation on this. There were two abutters meetings. We deferred this last time at the request of the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, because there were a number of residents who, in the immediate area, had some specific concerns over the use. Mr. LaFaro and Ms. Matos had taken the opportunity to do direct outreach to those abutters, and they supported it.
So let's, let's just backtrack. So give us a complete explanation about what this is. First, these are small independent units, are there, or are they shared bathrooms? Just, just explain it to us from soup to nuts.
So I'm Priscilla. Nice to meet you guys. And we have been running this now for a couple of years. It's been something that we've poured our heart and soul into.
Please enough, just tell us about the meat of this. Three units?
It's one house. It's got three units.
Okay.
When someone, it's a family, that might stay...
So how many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms each?
One bath in each floor.
Uh-huh.
The first unit, and so when people come and stay, they are occupying that space for their privacy. It's usually a family. They want space for their kids to play. They want to, you know, they want to be able to cook and make meals. Professionals working on an executive program, professor that's traveling for a short period of time.
So what's the difference, Counselor, between this and executive suites? Coming in as a lodging house versus executive suites?
Lodging house, a conditional use, and a 3F 2000, I think executive suites are...
Is forbidden.
Forbidden, because those are more permissible in commercial and economic development areas. So lodging house would be the most compatible, or I guess the use that requires the least amount of zoning relief in order to accomplish what the...
At the least resistance, okay.
Well, you say potato.
Yeah. And how many square feet is each unit?
So each unit is, unit one is 931 square feet, unit two...
Sorry, 900?
931.
Uh-huh.
Unit two is 916 square feet. Unit three is 543 square feet. There's no...
So why aren't these rented out as regular dwelling units?
For six months out of the year? We have families that are looking for a short period of time, and so they, they actually, all right now, units are signed under lease for six months.
Why not six-month leases?
So we do that for half of the year, and so for the other half, we've just seen a much greater need in the community for people wanting something for a shorter period. It's been an ability to just...
So if you could, you said you've been operating this for the last several years. So essentially, it was a three-family that you had been Airbnb-ing the entire building, correct?
Always under the six-month, six-month. We've always operated this way. So there's no actual change. We just want to make sure that we are in accordance to recent changes. And so that's why we want, we kind of want to be early adopters of the new policy and make sure that we're doing things correctly.
The, the alternative is to not change the zoning and not, you wouldn't be in compliance if that was the operation that you were...
So if it was not in compliance, then it would go back through a three-family use?
Yeah, so already currently a three-family use.
But a three-family is a true three-family use.
That's correct.
Not, not with six-month leases, but with longer-term rentals.
You would not be able to operate the short term because there is no owner occupancy in the building?
Okay. And let me just look at the plans, see if there's a roof deck or basement dwelling space?
There's no, no change being proposed to the actual existing structure now. This is use only. There is no roof deck on the building. The only change that would occur, based upon the commercial nature of the use, when you change from residential to logic, would be to upgrade the life safety. So the building would be sprinkled and would have to have the updated central system alarm.
So what's to prevent this from becoming a rental where each bedroom is rented out?
So lodging house, by definition, does permit that?
Yep.
That's not necessarily the model that Mr. LaFaro, Ms. Matos are...
No, but we have to just look at it as something that goes with the property and not with the owner.
So petition, this petitioner only? They're not, in the, in the business of Airbnb, meaning they're not owning hundreds of properties across the city. They're looking to do this. This is one specific property they're doing. So the prevention to flip that to, for example, an Airbnb company, could be applicable to this petitioner only, which I believe the board has done.
The issue we have with that is that that is just, in our experience anyway, that that is not necessarily a red flag when there is a change of ownership. You know, that just, people just go ahead, buy the property, assuming what it is, and, you know, continue the use. So that's, that's not enough protection for the community. Okay.
The restriction?
Can we, can we make it?
Let's just hold off.
Okay.
How are the plans? Did I ask you, Mr. Olick? I did?
Yeah.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We will recognize that this proposal got some support from the abutters and as well from the Neighborhood Association, but based on an administration policy, we can support this proposal at this time. So we would like to go on the record in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anything else to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Can I make a motion to deny?
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Your opposed?
Yeah.
Oh, there's one person. So motion for denial carries. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 948-426-1150, Leyton Street. This is demolish an existing structure and erect a new eight-residential-unit building with nine parking spaces. Violation to Article 25, Section 5, the Flood Hazard District. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling unit is forbidden use.
Are you going ahead, sir?
Deferral, sorry.
Deferral, okay.
Sorry about that.
Save my breath. Name and address for the record, please.
Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we were prepared to go forward today. We were informed of additional opposition that was brought to the attention of Office Neighborhood Services. We understand they would support a deferral to give us an opportunity of further outreach on this. We think that would be helpful, since in the past, we've been successful in having conversations with abutters and neighborhood people. So we're asking for a brief deferral on this.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
The earliest we can get you in is March 24th, 11:30.
Okay. See you then.
Thank you very much.
Going to go back to a couple of cases I called earlier. Sprague Street, Sprague Street's here. Come on up. You moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to call them into the record, calling BOA 101-834-736 to 40, Sprague Street. Companion case, BOA 101-8350, 38 to 40, Sprague Street. This is 36 to 40, Sprague. This is erect a new five-story, 101-unit apartment building with parking on the first floor. An existing vacant warehouse will be removed. Violation to Article 69, Section 14, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 69, Section 14, accessory parking is permitting. Article 69, Section 15, a floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 15, the building height is excessive. Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 69, Section 29, off-street loading is insufficient. Article 69, Section 30, conformity within existing building alignment. Article 69, Section 30, two or more dwellings on the same lot. This is for 38 to 40, Sprague. The violations are the same, but I will read the purpose. This is erect a new five-story, 146-unit apartment building with parking on the first level. An existing vacant building removed to, on a, same violations. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney John Pulgeni, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. With me is Steve Shelter, who is the team architect, together with Sanjeet Satholi, who is representing the developer in this project. 36 to 40, Sprague is on High Park. It's... It's in Hyde Park. It's on the Dedham line of Hyde Park, and it's directly adjacent to the Reedville Commuter Rail-
Can you speak up, please, or bring it closer?
I'm, sorry.
It just feels echoey to me. Sorry, go ahead.
So, the project is located on Sprague Street in Hyde Park, which is on the Dedham border, and it's directly adjacent to the Reedville Commuter Rail Station. The zoning in this neighborhood, LI1 and LI2, 36 Sprague Street is located in LI1, 38 Sprague is in LI2. Violations, use, multifamily is forbidden in LI, a local industrial district. Use, parking, accessory is forbidden. FAR, we have allowed a, we're at 1.64. It's kind of a blend, Madam Chair, because in an LI1, the FAR is one, and in LI2, obviously, is a two, so we're at 1.64. Off-street-
This is a blend from one and two, or?
That is correct.
Okay.
Off-street loading is insufficient. Off-street parking in Hyde Park, as you all know, it's two parking spaces per unit. We're a little over one per unit. And then we have continuity with existing alignment, which was moved throughout the community process, and two or more dwellings in the same lot. This proposal is to demolish two and three industrial buildings and construct two buildings connected by a shared podium and residence community space. The gross square footage of this new development is 386,185 square feet. The lot size is 168,613 square feet. As I stated, the FAR is approximately 1.64. It's 247 units. There'll be 35 studios, 134 one-bedrooms, 69 two-bedrooms.
35 studios, 131?
134 ones, 69 two-bedrooms, and nine three-bedrooms.
And average square footage?
Sure. The studios range in size from 480 to 660 square feet. One-bedrooms range from 620 to 1240 square feet. Two-bedrooms range from 850 to 1930 square feet, and the three-bedrooms range between 1240 and 1470 square feet. This is, obviously, it was an Article 8 process, large project review. Went through a very robust process. Part of that is there will be 32 affordable units, offered at 70% AMI. I could give you those current prices if you would like those, as I stated. So, this, one of the violations was height. We're at 77 feet, five stories. Only three stories are visible from the street, because the podium sits down below, if you're familiar with the area. This project, this process has been going on for about four and a half years. This project started out at 500 and-
So, hold on.
Sure.
I don't look at where it started off. I look at where the zoning starts off. So, there's, that's a different perspective. But, you know, tell us about the parking, that, you know, this is not easily accessible by public transportation, despite, I know everybody's going to say the Reedville train station is there, but tell us about the parking.
So, where, we, as I stated, so it's 247 units. We have 251 parking spaces, so we're a little over one-to-one ratio.
Mm-hmm.
As I stated earlier, and as you just commented, it is directly adjacent to the Reedville Commuter Rail Station. It is literally right next door to it.
I know where it is.
And if you read the paper today, Governor Baker has just put a proposal in to add eight new trains on that, so it won't be quite rapid transit, but it won't be what we've been used to in Hyde Park, is having the infrequency of the travel on the commuter rail.
And then, it looks like you have some commercial space in there?
We do. There are some amenities. Some of these will be back before the board. We're having a fitness studio. We have a half-court basketball court, coffee shop, proposed sports bar, daycare facility. We have shared workspace and a rooftop pool.
So, basically, you're just here today is for the residential uses, not for the commercial uses?
Well, just because we, as we've gone through this on several other projects, we haven't identified exactly who those tenants would be for that, so that would be something we would deal with down the road.
I was just going to ask you, do you need them?
Well, through the community process, they wanted that. This is something that they felt was, they didn't want it just a residential building. They felt if you built a residential, as you all know, Hyde Park hasn't had any developments significant of this size. They wanted something that would be a higher-end type development, and so with that was the amenities that was attractive to the abutters.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Mr. Olick?
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Can I just ask everybody to quickly line up? We're getting late in the day, and we still have cases ahead of us. Okay? So, if people, also, if you're here to speak in opposition, just get ready to line up, okay? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. We do want to go on record in full support of this proposal. There was a lengthy community process involved with this that was initiated by my predecessor, Dave McDulte, years ago. Since then, there's been multiple community meetings, and our office wishes to offer our full support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mine operates with the carpenters union. On behalf of hundreds of union carpenters that live and work throughout the city of Boston, want to go on record in support.
Hi, Chris Leith, 35-year resident of Hyde Park. I'm a resident of Reedville, currently homeowner, and I'm in strong support of this project. I've been to all the neighborhood meetings, vocalized my issue of support, and I'd love to build this.
Can you give us your address for the record?
1 Westinghouse Plaza.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Tierney. I'm a long, I live at 38 Milton Ave. I'm a long-term resident, long, long-term resident of Hyde Park. Followed the process from day one. I am in 100% support of what it is bringing to us, so I just want to say that I'm in support of it and hope it passes.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA is under review.
Second.
I'm just going to make it clear, please, if you can put the note in the file, Mr. Olick, that this does not approve tenancy of the, of the other spaces that will need to come in.
It's not on the, it's not on the refusal letter that Mr. Fortune read off, so.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll go back to the other two cases that I called earlier. Is Trenton Street here?
Yes.
Okay. Calling BOA 100-3594, 138 Trenton Street. There's a companion case, BOA 102-8014, 138 Trenton Street. This is for 138. Construction of a new roof deck. Violation Article 53, Section 9, insufficient real yard setback. And Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restrictions access.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Hold on, sir. We got a companion case, sir. This is for 138 Trenton. Extend living space of unit A, first floor, into the finished basement area. The violation Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Matthew Kinch. I'm the owner of 138 Trenton Street. To my right is Tori Kelleher, the project manager.
So, tell us about the extension into the basement first. What's the floor-to-ceiling height?
Seven feet.
Floor-to-ceiling height is in the basement? So, what's the occupancy of this building?
The occupancy of the building is three units, each being of two bedrooms and two bathrooms.
Two bedrooms, two bath, and the extension into the basement is for one of the units?
Yes, it is. It's exclusively for the first-floor unit.
And what, what will the use of the space be?
It's just living space. There's no bedrooms. There's a laundry room scheduled to be down there, and essentially, an additional bonus room.
Okay. And the utilities are accessed from a separate-
The utilities are accessed separately from a front door, which is located on the front of the dwelling. Two steps go down into the front of the basement. That section is separated from the living space in the rear, so there's common access to all utilities for all three occupants.
Okay. And then, tell us about the roof deck.
The roof deck can be built by right. What we're actually looking for is the, we're here to talk about the access. The current rear decks are existing decks accessed by an existing spiral staircase. We're seeking to add one additional flight to that spiral staircase. We're actually not going to stack the spiral staircase on top of the existing unit. We're going to center it on the third-floor deck. The roof deck will be exclusive to the third floor.
What's the dimension of that roof deck?
The dimension of the roof deck? Just excuse me for one moment.
It's 15 feet by 20 feet.
15 by 20? How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, they were fine until you said it was, you said the basement had seven feet?
Yes, sir.
For three units, the seven foot six is a minimum. One or two family units can have a seven-foot basement for living space, but not, that's a violation of the law.
Okay.
Well, okay.
Yes, sir. Understood. It is fully sprinkled. Does that help at all with two full egresses?
No.
Okay.
I mean, you'll have to dig out the foundation. You'll have to do something to get seven foot six.
Sure.
And, and, you know, the option to us is two, is also not to approve the use of the basement? To deny that, please?
That's why I'm asking the question.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Of both of these? Extension into the basement and the roof deck?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tremelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support during the community process. This proposal received a strong support from the abutter, and there were no concerns from Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Sabi Georgie's office, would like to go on record of support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? Oh, any questions? Yeah.
I gotta say, I'm uncomfortable with roof decks that have access the way this does, and where somebody can get into that backyard and go right from the ground all the way up to the roof deck. I mean, you say it's exclusive to the third floor, but there's nothing to prevent-
Sure, understood. De is exclusive.
Including, like, a little kid that lives next door. These are those row hoses. They're setback, they're weird hoses to begin with, because it's front yard parking, which I understand is existing, but, um-
Would you like us to add a locking gate? A combination gate?
Well, then, it's not egress. What happens in the case of fire?
It would have to be unlocked.
So, and this, is this the second means of egress? Are these files says a second means of egress to the entire building?
Yes, it is.
It is.
The existing rear three stairs.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
There's two problems here. There's the issue that Sweet Garros identified, and it's also the problem with the basement. I think they need to go back to the drawing boards.
Is it for both of them, or can we, or can we dispose of one of them? Because-
Well, we can make a motion for no building code relief, but that doesn't solve the problem of the spiral staircase. I would make motion for deferral.
For both of them, or it's, since the basement, so with the basement, we need to just make, make it clear. You need seven foot six inches. Are you prepared to go ahead and put in, to dig in to get that seven foot six inches, or we can just go ahead and deny that use, because obviously, you're not in conformance with the building code?
Correct. I don't, we will not be digging out that basement.
Okay, so let's make a motion for that basement use.
My motion would be to deny, uh-
To deny? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. How about that roof deck? Do you see a solution? You understand what our issues are?
Yes, I do understand.
Will, will a deferral help you fix that? I'm asking both of you at the table.
May I ask, would you recommend?
We're not making any recommendations.
Okay. Understood.
It's your decision. Let's, I'm just, let's, let's just make a motion for deferral. If they can solve it, they can solve it. If they cannot, we know what we know.
I'd like to make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
I'll figure out one, take them in March.
March 24th. March 24th at 11:30. Okay?
Free time.
Madam Chair, we have the last case of the day, which is the interpretation. I'm sorry. Why don't I go to the recommendations and hearings? Do that before we do the interpretation?
Yes, why don't we dispose of those? Hold on one minute. In the meantime, while, while Mr. Fortune is going through the list of the recommendations and hearings, the property owner at, on River Street, can you please come to the table? And the abutters who are bringing in the request for the interpretation also come to the table, and I need a representative from ISD also at the table. In the meantime, Mr. Fortune, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this, this is the zoning advisory subcommittee, which met on Thursday, January 23rd, down at 1010 Mass Ave, fifth floor. These are the recommendations, and I'm going to call them into order. This case, BOA 102-566-171 Lexington Street, was renovations of an existing basement. It was approved with no building code relief. Case BOA 101-4461, 10 Austin Street, was to build a roof deck, an existing rubber roof. It was approved. Case BOA 998-2243, 5 to 7 Thornton Street, was to confirm occupancy as a two-family, third-floor addition. It was approved. as a two-family, third-floor addition. It was approved. Case BOA 102-4539-32 Jamaica Street was rebuilding enclosed new porch in existing porch location, six by eighteen, was approved. Case BOA 102-1322-21, Virginia Street was deferred to the subcommittee on February thirteenth. Case BOA 1004055-2022, Spalding Street was a, excuse me, extend living area to the attic, constructing new left and right dormit. It was approved. Case BOA 1009206-76 Wheatland Avenue was extend living space into the basement. Family room was approved. Case BOA 101-4369-10, Hill Street was denial without prejudice. It was a no-show. Case BOA 102-3224-170, Sherman Street was constructing new two-story sixteen by thirty addition. It was approved. Case BOA, companion case, BOA 1003353-48 St. John Street, companion case, BOA 1003355-48 St. John Street was to extend living space to the basement in a curb cut for two parking vehicles. It was approved. Case BOA 101-7258-166, Bellevue Street was a house renovation, existing structure, demolition, demolition and new living area was approved with BPDA review. Case BOA 1007727-295, Bellevue Street was a floor, was a constructing new two-story side addition garage below rear addition. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1007434-40 Church Street was a living, extend living space into the basement, remodeling existing. Yes, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 101-7199-40 LaSalle Street was constructing nine by fifteen by one-story addition. It was approved. Case BOA 101-2912-46, Bellamy Street was heard today, deferred today. Case BOA 102-6659-53, Coolidge Road, this was a gut renovation, a two-family dwelling, expand living space into the basement was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 101-3475-24, Winship Street was confirmed occupancy as a single-family dwelling, constructing new addition. It was deferred to two thirteen on the subcommittee. And case BOA 1009854-135, School Street, it was proposed to convert an existing one-family. It was deferred to two thirteen, two thousand twenty to the subcommittee as well. Those are the recommendations. Need a motion.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept the recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, um, I just need everybody to identify themselves. There's a whole lot, uh, cast of characters at the table. Thank you. So first, I need to see who's representing ISD. Can you put your name and address on the record?
Madam Chair, can I call this into the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm jumping the gun. Go ahead.
Okay. Let's see interpretation at twelve noon. The case, BOA 102-0647-54, River Street. This is the petitioner seeks to determination that Inspection Service Department aired an issuing of permit, ERT eight-nine-eight-eight-eight-three. The permit was issued as an allowed use. Name and address for the record.
Yes, Kim Thai, Assistant Commissioner for Plans and Zoning with Inspeccional Services at ten-ten Mass Ave.
Okay. Um, who is here representing the property owner?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members. That would be me, Attorney George Moranci with the business address at three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent fifty-four River Street LLC and its manager, Timothy Longden, property owner.
Is the, is the property owner here?
Uh, property owner is not. He's having a surgical procedure.
Okay. Who is representing the abutters?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Susan Lombardi Verticelli, and I'll be the spokesperson for the abutters today.
Okay. Okay, so, um, is there a site plan that, that we have for the record?
I believe there should be in the record. If not, I can hand over my copy.
Um, um, Mr. Moranci, on behalf of the property owner, can you describe what this project is?
Uh, the project is a four-story, eleven-unit, uh, dwelling building located at fifty-four Rear, um, River Street in, in Mattapan.
And, um, what's the zoning district?
This is an NS neighborhood shop.
It's NS, and what's the lot size?
Uh, lot size... The lot size is twenty thousand eight hundred thirty-eight square feet.
Eight hundred and thirty-eight square feet?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty, and it's NS, which means the FAR is one?
Uh, the FAR is, uh, two, I believe.
Two?
I'm sorry, one, yes.
One. Okay. Okay. So, can I talk to the abutters now? Tell us on technical terms, as far as zoning is concerned, because, Mr. Moranci, put on the record the square footage, the zoning district, the FAR, and the, and the, um, the four-story, eleven-unit use. Can you please tell us in technical terms why, why this is in violation of the zoning? It should not have been approved as of, as of right. I'm making no judgment on it. I'm just asking for facts.
Um, understood. Um, I'd also like to go on record that we have about a ten-minute presentation. This has been, uh, a very big project, um, over the span of a number of years, and I think understanding the project where we draw into the zoning concerns would be the most useful thing.
I'd like you to start with the zoning concerns, because we are here to look at it from a zoning perspective.
Yep.
Okay, so please, tell us height, rear yard, FAR, whatever you think.
We believe that there's a violation in the setback.
Which setback?
The rear setback.
Okay.
We believe that there's a violation of the FAR.
Okay, so tell us, tell us what, what the setback requirement is, and what do you think the violation is?
The required setback should be twenty feet.
Yeah.
However, when this project was permitted as of right, they were already in violation of their setback. It's only been most recently that they've made the change.
So tell us, tell us, so, if the zoning requirement is twenty feet?
Correct.
Tell us what the setback is that, that triggered you, uh, bringing it in for an interpretation.
It's less than twenty feet.
I mean, is it five feet? Is it seven feet? What is it?
No. Um, I believe, I'm not allowed to walk the property to measure it, but their original stakes probably put it more at, is, yeah, seven to ten feet.
Seven to ten feet? Okay. Okay, so besides the rear yard setback, what else?
Uh, we also believe there's a violation of the FAR.
Okay. And so the FAR is one?
Yes.
And this is a twenty thousand square foot lot?
Mm-hmm.
So the building could be forty, forty-two, forty, forty-two thousand square foot?
Yes, however, Madam Chair, the, um, developers are claiming land.
Sorry, twenty, twenty thousand square feet. Okay, sorry.
The developers are claiming land that belongs to two direct abutters, um, a case that has pushed us into land court, um, and they're using that strip of land for their FAR.
And tell us about that strip of land. Uh, what's the dimensions of that?
Um, do you know the dimensions? We can, we actually have an aerial foot, um, photograph here. Um, it's about a...
We can look at that. We can bring it up here. Sure.
It's about a four-and-a-half-foot strip of land that runs from number five Taylor Terrace to number nine Taylor Terrace.
Tell us which, which, which...
Yep, the red roof, the red roof is number nine Taylor Terrace, and the white roof next to it is number five Taylor Terrace.
Okay.
You can also see that, given the zero lot line, that they are literally building to the abutters' fence line.
And, and is the butter built to their property line?
And they are using footing?
No, no, let me just ask you. Is the butter in the red roof built to their property line?
They are built to the chain link fence, yes.
To the chain, so they, they two...
They have a garden there.
So they violated their rear yard requirement by building right to the property line?
Yes.
Uh, let me just ask you.
The developer?
No, whoever owns this red roof.
It's a zero, it's all NSD, N D O D, so the front and sides are a zero lot line variance with the rear being a twenty-foot.
Okay, okay. And besides FAR, what else are you...
We also believe that there's an overburdening of an easement.
Okay.
There's a nineteen forty-six easement in place that, of course, given the times, would probably be looking at a couple of cars. Um, in recent memory, that easement has been used to garage three to four vehicles, and the developers are now proposing thirty-one vehicles. That also goes off a blind curve off of River Street where there's been no traffic study or impact study on how that will affect the neighborhood nor the safety of the people in the neighborhood.
So is the, um, the, um, the overburdened easement, and then the property that you're saying that the developer is using it to, uh, calculate their FAR?
Correct.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, we also believe, um, that their complete project violates Article sixty-five point one.
In what way? I mean...
Well, I'd like to read the zoning code.
Um, tell us, I mean, tell us and summarize for us.
Well, the, the zoning code speaks specifically to having the community involved in what's going to happen in their neighborhood, and specifically what should be, the neighborhood parcels should be used for. It includes affordable housing, housing for the elderly, green space, and it also talks about equality of life. It also talks about preserving the environment. As you know, that strip of, those two parcels are feet from the Nippon's River. We believe that these two parcels, specifically fifty-four, which we're talking today, are in complete violation to Article sixty-five point one.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
We also believe that the developer is crossing property lines with their footing. Um, they're using a T-footing, um, type of building material, and so as they go into the earth, they're actually crossing over the property lines. They also haven't include any shoring in their building, so each day, uh, there is settling from the abutting properties, and it's weakening the two abutting, direct abutting properties.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, um, ISD?
Yes.
Tell us why this was issued in your, in your perspective as of right?
Um, yes, Madam Chair. Um, with respect to FAR, um, this is an NS two, uh, excuse me, an NS, uh, subdistrict with an FAR of one. Um, according to the plans that we approved, the FAR is at point nine-eight. With respect to the land dispute...
Can you speak to the way that the FAR was calculated in response to the...
Yes, so this is eleven-unit building. There is open parking on the ground floor with an elevated second, third, and fourth stories. Um, and so what we're calculating is with respect to the habitable, habitable space over a twenty, that, over a twenty-thousand square foot lot.
And, and what about the, the parcel that was raised by the...
So with respect to the piece of land that, um, the abutters have referenced, there, it's our understanding that there is an adverse possession claim that is occurring in land court concurrently. However, we have reviewed it, and that even if they are successful with the adverse possession claim, that it has no bearing on this building permit because there is a zero, um, setback for side yard.
So the FAR would still be under one?
The FAR would still be under one.
Okay, uh, so it's a zero, zero setback on the side yard?
Madam Chair.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, and then, hold on. Let me proceed. Um, ta, ta, tell us about the rear yard?
Yes, um, so, uh, I submitted a copy of the approved plans to the board. On the site plan, it shows that at the elevation, and it's dotted, so you may not see it clearly, but there's two points that are the closest points to the rear yard lot, uh, rear yard lot line, and it's at twenty point eight feet is the closest distance, with the second one being at twenty-six feet.
Okay. And then, um, so to the FAR, we address that. We address the, uh, side yard, the rear yard, uh, parking, parking. What's the parking requirement?
The parking requirement is one point five. This is eleven units, and they have twenty-one parking spaces.
Okay. Um, and this is not in a flood zone at all, in proximity to the Nippon's in any way?
No, according to our GIS mapping, there is none triggered.
It's not at all. Okay. Um, and then, how about the, the concern that the footing is crossing the property line?
So we, ISD did receive a complaint from the abutters with respect to concerns of the footing. A building inspector went out and verified and measured the footings to make sure that they were in accordance with the plans that were approved with ISD.
And it was on the subject property at, um, at this address of, uh, fifty-four
Fifty-four.
River Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chair, those lines are going to the survey line, not to, to the fence line.
So tell us the difference between the survey line and the fence line?
Madam Chair, hi, Nishira Baril with Five Taylor Terrace. There's about a, um, four-foot piece of land that's disputed right now in land court. Abutters are fighting for adverse possession to a chain link fence that has been there for over twenty-five years. So with the footing is under the chain link fence, but to the, their argument is not touching the survey line, and so we are currently disputing that.
So does it respond to that? It is on the disputed land or not?
That's not my, our understanding.
Okay, okay. Anything that the representative for the property owner wants to add?
Um, not really, Madam Chair. I don't think there's a clearly enunciated, um, zoning violation here that's supported by fact, uh, with respect to, uh, section one of Article sixty-five. That's preamble language. It really goes more to, uh, the process for engaging the community in drafting Article sixty-five. Uh, with respect to the land court dispute, it's not a zoning matter. Uh, there is an ongoing case in the land court. I think the latest hearing date in that matter was yesterday. Uh, I'm not hearing it, and I think that, uh, this stands, uh, on its own, the facts, uh, quite clearly that it is dimensionally compliant, notwithstanding, uh, the dispute over the disputed portion of the, of the lot.
Um, the, um, abutters, uh, you talked about thirty-one vehicles and a blind curve. What is thirty-one vehicles? As far as I understand, the parking provided is twenty-one?
Yes, um, there are two now separate LLCs who have, um, at one time each owned the other property. The two combined totals of the properties will have thirty-one vehicles coming off a blind curve on River Street, also going over the shared easement between fifty River Street.
So is there, go ahead.
Madam Chair, just, uh, on the issue of overburdening of an easement, uh, there, there's no standing among the, the petitioners in this matter. This is an easement that is shared with another property owner who is not a member of the petitioner class here. Issue of overburdening of, of an easement, as alleged, is a private legal matter between property owners. It has nothing to do with zoning or this board.
However, Madam Chair...
So, so, hold on, hold on. So let me just get this straight. The easement is with another property owner?
Yes.
It's, and who is not questioning the use of the easement in any way, shape, or
To the best of my knowledge...
That is not true.
Certainly not signed on to the letter that triggered this hearing.
That is not true, Madam Chair, and that's why it's incredibly important to hear the full story, and why fifty-two and fifty-four inextricably linked. Fifty-two has no easement. Fifty-two is a landlocked parcel with no easement, no egress, and no frontage. The reason this is very important is because it pushes fifty-four, Mr. Ahern and Mr. Longden, to have to buy fifty-four, because fifty-four has an easement with number fifty, Mr. Paul Clark, who's here with us. And what you also need to know is fifty-two has no way to get utilities onto its property without their developer friends buying fifty-four.
Okay, so, um, so, so please clarify, because fifty-two...
Also...
Does not have frontage on River Street?
There is a shared easement between fifty-two R and fifty-four River Street.
Madam Chair, there is no...
Please, she has the, she has the...
Understood, thank you.
There are two recordings of an easement, as well as an explanation from Mr. Longden when we issued fifty-two River Street with respect to the easement granting a twenty-foot access, uh, right-of-way into the back lot. Um, it's based on that access that we deemed the property to be as of right with respect to the frontage. There is no requirement for lot, minimum lot width or minimum lot frontage in an NS two. Um, the, as I stated, the easements are recorded, and they are noted in the site plan that's stamped and signed by a design, Massachusetts Design Professional.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
So I will take last comments, um, and then we will make a decision.
Okay, um, I just want to clarify the easement. My name is Paul Clark, fifty River Street.
Yeah.
And half of the driveway land belongs to me.
And so tell me, is, is, is your property shown on this?
Yes.
Which house is it? Is it the red roof? Is it this roof? Or where is it?
Correct.
Is it this, this piece of property?
Yes.
Yes.
This property with, uh, um, just for everybody at the table, um, Mr. Clark's property is this one right here. Okay?
So I was not notified about the easement or who is gonna share that easement.
So, and so, okay?
And half of that driveway is my land, but seven foot over from the center of the driveway over is the easement, and seven feet over from the center of that driveway over to their property that belongs to fifty-two, fifty-four is their easement. And they are planning on opening up that easement to thirty-two to make it commercial. That, I was told that last week, from twenty to thirty-two, to open up that easement. And I was not notified about who's sharing that easement.
Okay, just so for clarification, can you please tell us what that easement will be used for? Will that easement be used for both access to fifty-four and fifty-two River Street?
Yes.
I'm not asking you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm asking, you asked the question.
According to the...
I'm just trying to get an answer.
According to the site plans that were submitted to ISD for both permits, it shows the access going over the easement, and that the easements are legal. From ISD's zoning perspective, all we're looking for is access into the property, and overburdening and easement is not a zoning issue. That is, as Attorney Moranci indicated, is a legal issue that's in dispute between the two landowners. Um, and I believe that is actually in court right now, in land court.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
So, any, and so I'm gonna close this off for general comments. Okay?
They have counsel. They have counsel. The counsel, you have counsel.
Are you counsel? Because...
No, I'm an abutter. I'd like to just make a comment if I could.
You're an abutter? Yes, please.
Please, um, yes, I'm, uh, Gary Tonroftick, seventeen Temple. I'm an abutter on the other side of River Street, and I just wanted to comment a little bit on some of the, the easement versus the frontage. Um, this was one large parcel, T-shaped, at one point in nineteen forty-six. There was a, part of the parcel was split off, which is fifty-two R River Street. It was given a private, narrow easement from that parcel to River Street. The fifty-two R does not have frontage. It has a private easement, but there's a difference between an easement and frontage, and I think that, I think it's being represented in a way that it's a losery frontage. And I think that that's something that we raised, uh, back when we got the abutters notices, uh, from Rosa Herrero Donde from, uh, BPDA, and we commented on these issues back then in March. I think it was March nineteenth, plus or minus, we raised these issues. We did not hear anything back from BPDA on this, but, um, I just wanted to make that point. That, that point has been out there for a long time, and it was part of this, part of this question. The other thing I'd like to just mention on fifty-four is the building code requires that if there's an excavation between zero and five feet, that there be shoring. What's happening is the spread footing, which is symmetrical, the outboard side of that footing, even if the wall is zero lot line, the outboard side of that footing, sixteen inches or so, is underneath the neighbor's property. So I think that needs to be understood relative to where we are on this. And then the third point I'd like to make is, um, we've done a lot of research in terms of the plans, and going back to the original survey plans, took it all the way back to the, um, uh, eighteen eighty-nine easement, uh, the map that was done by Dorchester Athenaeum, and the parcels on Taylor Terrace have not changed at all since then. Uh, the parcel here has from nineteen forty-six on. The, the easement was never recorded. It was then discovered and then rerecorded in two thousand and sixteen. Um, but I just wanted to make those points because what we have here, um, is a situation where I have a question about the plan, the overlay of the plans. The plans we saw in March, BPDA submitted plans, and the plans up about a month ago, and the plans now, there's a question here as to the rear yard setback. And I respectfully hear what the applicant is saying about the twenty feet, but I've looked at the plans, and I don't think it's twenty feet. I think we need to have a surveyor, an independent surveyor, verify all of this if we could.
Let's, hold on. So let me just, I know this is in... So let me just, I know this is in, really, the question that the abutters brought in was for 54 River Street. So I think that what we need to do, because we need some more detailed technical analysis, and as is customary with this board, we can send this to the law department to look it over, and we will ask for a quick turnaround from the law department to really look in detail at this proposal for 54, and I'm going to make it very clear, for 54 River Street. I want to contain it because what I'm hearing here is a combination of issues with 52, 54, 50, and everything else in between. So I want to make it very clear, we are limiting it to only 54 River Street to this analysis. So that should not be difficult for the, for the law department to look this over and come up with some information for us. Okay, so may I have a motion to that effect?
Madam Chair, just a comment.
Unless you have any questions from the board.
Just a comment, which is, in our request to the law department, I also want to make sure that we are only asking about zoning issues. There clearly are a whole host of other issues that are in land court or other venues that should not be decided by this board. So...
Absolutely.
So based on that, I would make a motion that we refer the issue to the law department to get it...
Madam Chair, may I say something?
And we are narrowing the issue to precisely zoning issues?
Yeah.
And precisely to 54 River Street. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will request that if there is any paperwork that any of the parties at the table would like to submit for review by the law department, have them submitted by Friday, the latest, okay?
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Can we have this put into the record unless you want to submit it at a later date by Friday with explanation?
We can also, is it possible to submit electronically?
Yes.
Then we can submit electronically as well.
And just speak to Antoinette about how that gets done, okay?
Good morning, Chief.
Thank you. The meeting is now adjourned.